We'll now reconvene the budget workshop. And we're down to the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, so...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if we could, Mark Nelson's with Community Colleges here tonight. He was able to come, and so if I could take you back to page 125, I know there were some questions last night regarding the Community College budget. So, just an overview of that again to kind of tee it back up. Their current expenses being recommended is 2.515. It's the same amount that they requested when we met with them. And their total capital outlay is the same amount, $283,000. However, part of what we did again with this was we took, we looked at what they had shown in their capital request, in their major capital, and looked at projects that we felt like could be financed over 10 years. So, we pulled that out, and what we're showing is 118 in cash capital and 165 in financed capital. But the numbers are the same, 283 is what they requested. And then, so the total of 2.798 million is the total. That's, it's what they had requested, and it's what we funded, or recommended we funded. So, Mark's here to answer any questions you have particularly. I know Christian has some questions last night, so... And you'll see their request on page 126.
Do you have any comments, Mark, before we open up for questions?
I guess I'll have to get with Brian on the financing, what he was looking at for the financing piece, on which particular items, you know, when we get ready to do that, provided you approve that funding.
Mr. Bosio. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Real quick, it was, it was the major HVAC stuff, and then the shelter building is what we looked at before. So, but we certainly get with you on that. Thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
It's not raining now, so that's, that's a plus.
So, that'll take you, Mr. Chairman, to public safety. That starts on page 127 with the Sheriff's Office. And again, just to kind of tee that up, Charlie's here to answer any particular questions you have. The Sheriff's Office, which is, they list out, the big chart is on page 127, and then we break it out into administrative and operations. That's what we list in the, in the full, in the Sheriff's Office. And then the Sheriff's Office Jail, and then communications. The Sheriff's Office itself, the administration side and patrol side is up 3.2 percent. The jail is down 1.7 percent, and the communications are essentially flat, they're down 1.2 percent. Just from our side, I guess if you look on page 130, you know, some of the major drivers there, fuel, we, we had originally, last year, budgeted about 75, based on some, some decreased fuel prices. Fuel's kind of playing games with us again, so historically, we look back at what we were spending this year, and we bumped that to about 120. That's one of the big ones. And then, the law enforcement information, I believe that's where we moved. Was that where we moved? That's where we moved. I was at 125, we put some additional stuff in, law enforcement information.
And that was more moving funds around from different lines, and then putting them together where it just made more sense as far as the accounting for them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chief, maintenance and repair of vehicles, you recommended 150,000. What is that money used for?
That is money that is used for oil changes, tire rotations, new tires, routine maintenance, but it also covers repairs. If we have, if we have to move equipment from one vehicle to another, then it covers the taking the equipment out of one and moving it into another vehicle, and pretty much anything that goes along with any adaptations to vehicles that we have.
You don't have anybody on, on site that does that, you have to have that hired out.
Well, you know, if it's something very simple, you know, if it's a fuse that blows, then we will do that. If it's anything that has to do with taking equipment out and replacing that with other equipment, then we, we use a...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
If I could, just go over sort of a brief overview on a couple of the lines that just have had change.
Yes, go right ahead.
Just, that may lead us into, or maybe a question.
Go right, go right ahead, Charles.
On the Sheriff's Administration, administrative side, I wanted to talk about the overtime line for salaries. We wanted to maintain that at the $200,000. What that does, and you know, the, the main part of overtime that we have would be for the extra things. You know, if we're talking about transports that need to be taken, that we can't use a deputy who is working the road. If we have a major crime scene that may have investigators that have to stay out for hours, I'll give you an example, where if we, if we have a homicide, which, you know, very, very thankful that we have very few of those, there may be five or six investigators that will work for, you know, 18 hours, that would be specifically overtime for that given day. So, that, those are the drivers for, for overtime, that we usually try to do everything that we can to keep those numbers down, but historically, over the last three or four years, 200's been our number, and we want to keep that at the 200, even though knowing that there could be a possibility for that to spike if we have a weather event, or if there's an event that goes on in the jail like we've had over the last couple of years. That leads me to salaries part-time. The part-time line, we're looking for a bit of an increase on that. That covers auxiliary or reserve deputies that we may have, that either may be retired and are looking to keep their certification, so they're still sworn law enforcement officers. And we utilize the part-time help and the auxiliary help for things that we have, like transports, if we need to sit at the hospital with an inmate or with somebody that we arrest and things of that nature. Plus, it covers the part-time help that we have at the administrative office and in, and in, for, for that piece, and investigations that we would have for our records, so that, that is, we're looking to take that from 35,000 to 45,000, just to try to help out and to try to keep the overtime number at what it is. Electronic house arrest, that is, that is our pre-trial release program, that is, the, all the funds that are in that line are for pre-trial release. And we've tried our best to capture the actual numbers and then budget based off of what we're looking at on those. Those numbers and those people can fluctuate from month to month. You know, I think the low number that we've had has been nine, the high number that we've had has been 21, and we lease those units that we use. So, we will actually drop, we will, if we need to get more, we make a phone call and an email, and then within three days, we get more units in for those. And then, when that number drops down, if we, you know, then we send units back to try to, to keep that, that cost as low as we possibly can. But that's one of those numbers, that it is a cost, but it's actually a cost savings on a lot of ways, because if they're on pre-trial release, then the people are, are out, they can still work, and we're not having to house them in our jail. So, that, that number is, is looking to go up a little bit, but the actual cost that we've incurred over the last couple of years, we're just trying to correct and make that budget number correct.
Charlie, on the, on that electronic house arrest, how many of those ankle bracelets do you lose a year?
We haven't lost any. You know, there will be a couple that someone will cut them off or yank them off. I'd say two or three. We have with, the system that we have in place now, which is an upgrade from what we had four or five years ago, is that we get immediate notification anytime there's a tampering, and we get a GPS location. So, you know, now, if, if something happens and we get a tamper, that call goes out immediately, and then we immediately send deputies to go find, at the very least, they find the ankle bracelet.
Right.
You know, and then, then we can start tracking down the person who cut that off. So, I, I'd say the easy number would be two or three, but we've had some years where it's been zero, because the guys that are on pre-trial release, they know that the alternative, if they mess up even the slightest bit, then we put them in our jail. You know, so for the most part, those, those guys and girls that are on pre-trial release know that and understand that that's a benefit, and they, they don't mess with us too much on them. Law enforcement information line, that, that is one that, that's going to show some change. Over the last handful of years, every, every dollar that's been in the law enforcement information line was buy money, is that, you know, what we all call buy money. So, confidential informant money that the drug unit uses in, in their investigations, they're either paying confidential informants to do the, the work of actually buying the drugs in the cases, or we're paying for information. You know, there, there's times where we might need equipment on the spot that is covered out of that fund, you know, but those are, those are funds that are actively involved.
Who was that?
That's law enforcement information.
I got you.
What, what we've tried to do over the last two years, working with Brian and Anita on that, is that we, we want to make sure that the numbers in the budget are where they're supposed to be. You know, so we had $10,000 in one line that might have been for us doing traps and traces on cell phones. That is covered somewhere else that it really doesn't make sense, whether it was the law enforcement supplies, which would be more like batteries and things like that. We also had, we also had some funds that were in software and support, because it is the computer pieces of us trying to locate and find people, whether it's through property that they've pawned, or people's changes in credit, or skip tracing, or anything like that, that that would have been in software support. So, we've moved some of those funds to the law enforcement information line to give the commissioners a better idea of what money is being used to combat what type of crime. So, when you see that there's a change from the 70 to 125, I've got, my spreadsheet says a little bit more detailed, but I'll pass into you, and that would give you the, down to the detail of what is involved with each line. And, and that would show the changes, but it's, in essence, that's what I've told you. There's some software that we use that, that locates pawned property and stolen property that is under that line. We also use, there's a couple of applications that we can, it's, it's amazing what you can do, that those, that they combine searches. So, you can put somebody's name and date of birth into this application, and they will give you information of everywhere this person's ever lived. It'll give you reference and relative information, and a lot of times, that's used for people who are looking to collect debt as far as skip tracing, but, you know, with us, if, folks that owe, that are looking for debt are looking for people, then we can find people the same way, and we've been very successful with those things that, that we've used over the last couple of years. So, I hope that that is a decent enough explanation of why that those funds have been moved around, that we've tried to keep everything as flat as we can be. I'm not going to call out the commissioners who have told me this, that, that have told me for the last couple of years, that it seems like we're actually budgeting a little bit too lean. But I think a lot of that is the sheriff sees what's going on, and is trying, he tells me all the time, is that I'm the one that has my hands on the budget by the time that it gets to you, but it takes a lot of people to put that together. And the sheriff is adamant to listen to what's going on in the county, and tells me to keep it as, as small as we possibly can. So, the number that we are on all three of our budgets is the support level that the personnel that we have needs to do their job effectively and efficiently, but at that lean level. So, we're at the point now, if we're looking to cut anything big into it, then we need to look at, at programs and the level of personnel that we have. And that, that would be difficult under the circumstances that, that we've, that we've got going on in the county.
One more question. Contract maintenance.
Yes, sir.
What is that money used for? Here's from the bottom.
For the Sheriff's side, the contract maintenance pieces for several things. Those are the, the items that we would have that, like, if, if we've got some, we've got an alarm system, or the key fob system at our, at our office, you know, that we've got somebody that if something breaks, we call, and they come fix that, that if, if otherwise, if we didn't have those contracted services, then we wouldn't, we would be on a list of folks to do. So, we've got these, these contracts in place to maintain the things that we've got in operations that we have running, and that, that would be the example of what's in there. And I, I hope that answers your question.
Oh, yeah, it did. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes, sir.
From a safety perspective, the vests that we have for the deputies and investigators, are they high quality, are they sufficient?
Our body armor?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we run a vest that is, would be considered mid-level as far as the, the grade of it. You know, it's not, there, there are plenty of vests or body armor that would be, you know, just this, to your, cover your critical, absolute critical parts. But then there's also body armor that goes to the point where, you know, is, you're making a high-risk entry, and you've got Kevlar from head to toe. Our vests for our purposes are, they suit the need for us, and that's one. Vests are covered in our uniform line. We have right at 60 deputies that we have, and we have it on a rotation, and we've had for the last handful of years, that 15 new vests are purchased each year. So, that way, the, the going market is, is five years for a vest. That's what they're warranted for, you know, now, you know, I'm sure that you can make arguments whether the Kevlar will not work after that five years, but we're not going to put a vest that's out of date on a law enforcement officer. So, we, we will buy about 15 vests each year, and that's covered in our uniform line.
What about, for entries, do we have the shields?
We do.
What do you call them?
We do, we have two, we have two bunker shields. We do have some body armor that's a little bit thicker and a little bit, a little bit more bulky for the guys that have that extra, that additional training in making high-risk entry into residence, which we do more often than most people would think. You know, we'll make high entry, or high-risk entries into residences and into different places a couple of times a month, that you'll never hear on the news, because we get in, we get the job done without there being an incident, and that's exactly what we train, why we train, and why we do the things that we do. So, there's not an incident, and, and, you know, for the most part, you'll see a press release that'll, it'll be for a drug arrest, or, or arrest for property being seized and things like that, that's stolen, and those are the, the things that we've done those entries on.
Last question. What about our firearms? The quality, sufficient number, based on what you see in the street?
With, with the support of the commissioners, we replaced our rifles last year, and that, that is going to pay dividends for a long time. We've got, we went to more of a modular unit as far as the rifles go. The scores immediately went up, and on that is that, you know, a rifle's a rifle, a rifle, but flat out, I never liked the peep sights, which is a tiny little hole, and then a, a blade on the front of the rifle, on the rifle, on the rigors that we have, but shot it fine. The AR-style platform of sights that we have is a little, is a little different, and we've already seen some good benefit from moving to those rifles, and those will be good for us for many years to come.
Good, thank you, Charlie, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Evans?
Is there anything in the budget here for body cameras, or?
Yes, sir. You know, la, last year, backtrack, two years ago, we bought 20 body cameras. Last year, because of the equipment line, the way that was, and we really needed to get those rifles changed, we didn't buy any body cameras. We're down to 17, just because of, you know, well, one, one body camera got drowned, guy was working out, went up spraying and about like this, and, you know, the deputy was fine, but the camera didn't make it. And we lost two in fighting. The guys were fighting, one of them on the side of the road, and the body cameras did exactly what they were supposed to do. It caught footage and it caught sound that was going on around it, even after the body camera got yanked off the deputy. So, you know, for evidentiary value, the, the products did exactly what they were supposed to do. We're down to 17, but yes, we, we would love to, to buy another allotment of 20 cameras. We've got that in the budget, in the equipment line for that to be covered, and just to continue that program that the sheriff would like for over the, for us to be able to do that over the next three or four years, and he would like full implementation, that if you, if you are in a position where you're going to be dealing with the public, and that there's even the slightest chance that things can escalate into violence, or, or something that we would need evidence of, that he would like that, that deputy, or, or officer, or person to be wearing a body camera. So, that includes bailiffs, school resource officers, and detention officers. We want to get them in detention, even though we've got cameras overhead, there are things that that, that camera right on your, on your chest is going to get that those other cameras wouldn't. So, yes, we're looking to continue to do that.
What'd you say, they cost about, what'd you say, 400 apiece?
No, sir. I wish, I wish on that. The camera and the accessories that go for one person would be right at $1,000. And that, that includes, we're trying to be as, as upfront and, and trying to stay ahead of the curve, because the, if, for every dollar you spend on the camera, you're spending about that same dollar on storage, you know, for that, you know, the, right now, we're still not at a point where we, we feel that we can trust the cloud, where there are evidence. I mean, we see time and time again where things can go in, and that stuff gets hacked, and stuff gets lost. So, right now, everything that we're keeping as far as that evidence is in-house on, on hard drives that we have, and that's, it's pretty expensive, but for what, for what it is that we're looking to do, is the, the smartest way to do that. So, to your question, for each unit that we buy, it's about $1,000.
Charlie, when you look at the capital outlay on vehicles, this, at this level, is this what we're looking at pretty much on an annual basis in order to have a, a level budget without having to go up and down?
Over the last, over the last three or four years, I've guessed a lot. I've used a lot of data that we've had, and used a lot of information from other agencies, but I have guessed a lot, but a lot of those guesses have been pretty much right on the money. I've been saying for years, and I think for our agency, we've got 70 vehicles in our fleet, that if, if, you know, just break it down to simple math, simple math, if we can get 10 vehicles a year, then that puts us where, on that seventh and eighth year, we're rotating vehicles out, that puts us where we're going to be in that, in between that sweet spot of 110,000, 130,000 miles, where you, that 120, 125, 130 is where you really see the cost of maintenance on these vehicles start to pick up and spike, where, where, you know, the talks that I have with a lot of people is that, and people say, well, you know, the car isn't really that old, well, the, the brain is fine, the heart is fine, so the computer and the engine is fine, it's the knees, and it's the ankles, and it's the joints that start to go bad. And when you're replacing front ends on these vehicles at 120, and 130,000, you're talking about $4,000 and $5,000, you know, for these fixes. So, if we did 10 a year, and we moved on there, then we can, we're going to find a need for those 10 vehicles. There are going to be times, and there are going to be years, where we're going to look at the numbers, and we're going to see that we only have to buy six vehicles this year, you know, and those are the years that I would say that we look at the vehicles that are more of the special purpose, that we look at our transport van, we've got a transport van that we're putting miles on every day, all over the state, that's a 2000 model. You know, it's got a diesel engine in it, and the thing is as strong as it, as it probably was in 2000, but eventually, that's going to have to be replaced. And those vehicles are more expensive than the standard mark patrol car, or sedan, or SUV that we have. So, in those years that we're at, six or seven vehicles that we replace by the numbers, I think those are the years that we look to replace those higher-dollar vehicles to keep us at that threshold of money-wise each year, so we're not having to, having the spikes. You know, we don't want to see a year where we've, where we've got to have 15 or 20 vehicles, and we don't want to see a year where we only need two. So, and I know that was a lot of words to answer that question, but that is, that is how we see that when it comes to that capital outlay line.
You, you came to the commissioners several months ago, and wanted to purchase, I think it was two vehicles, maybe both of them were trucks, or one of them was a truck, and you were using seized money? What, what happens in the budget process when we've got, I think it was 165,000 that's sitting over there under the seized funds, or are we able to move any of that into this purchase?
Well, if the sheriff so chooses to do that, the seized money, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, seized money is the sheriff's, the, the office of the sheriff's, his money. That's the rule, and the sheriff has...
Well, I beg to disagree right there. That money is always, those expenditures have always been approved by this board, they've always been controlled by this board. I don't know how they do it other places, but it's not the sheriff's money. It does not belong to him. It's not in his separate budget. The law's very clear on this.
I think, Charlie, when you, when you came and asked for those, those two vehicles, you asked permission from the board to, to use that money to, to buy. So, actually, when you spend that money, we need to approve. It's what I, it sounds like to me.
That, that is, that, that money is, it is a partnership, it is. It is seized money, and it is restricted to the use for law enforcement tasks by the, whether it's the chief of police, if it's a municipality, or it's the sheriff, as the Sheriff's Office. But just like with every other fund that goes through the county government, and has to be appropriated for purposes by the board, and then we also have to abide by the local rules and, and policies as far as the spending of that. So, the sheriff sees the funds and wants to use that money for something, and then we have to go by the policies that are put for the board to get approval to spend that money. So, it's, it's the, it has to be both. I do not believe that the board can just say, we're going to use this for this, without the sheriff saying okay. And I also understand that it's not, the sheriff can't just say, well, forget what the board says, we're going to use it for this purpose. So, at this point, there's going to have to be an understanding, or the sheriff wants to do it, the board says yes, otherwise, that money just sits there forever and is used for nothing, whether it's a benefit or to the detriment of the people of Beaufort County.
And you're right, Charlie, that money is, is assigned to the Sheriff's Office, can only be used for law enforcement operations, or training, or vehicles, or whatever the Sheriff's Office needs. We can't tell you how to spend it.
Yes, we can.
No, we can't.
We always have.
I don't care what you've done, the law says not.
The law says different. The law in North Carolina says expenditures and money goes through commissioners, and that's no different on that than it is anything else.
I'm not talking about approval.
And it requires both of us to agree on the use of the funds.
I'll agree with you on one thing, we have to approve it, but you said, it's for law enforcement.
Commissioner Beattie?
What can you use this money for, Charlie?
The restricted funds are, it is, it is rather vague. It says for purposes that, that promotes law enforcement benefit, you know, so it, and, and most cases, it's for something that, that you would use it, that you can touch, for something that is tangible. But it can be used, it could actually be used for, as buy money, it could be used for other things that, that goes to promote a benefit for law enforcement purposes, but just like I said, I think for, you know, from the sheriff's point of view, just like I'm sure it would be from the point of view of the commissioners being elected officials, is that you, you would want to say, we use this fund, and we can all point at it, we used it for this, not something that we can go, what did you use it for? We used it for this, and it was great, but I can't show you what we actually did with it.
In, in this budget process that we're in right now, if there's 165,000 in that fund, can we use X number of dollars, like $100,000 out of the fund, and put it into the capital purchases?
Like, again, it goes back to what Charlie said, and if you can get an agreement between the board and the sheriff, and if that works, then...
Well, there is some language in there, isn't there, that goes to narcotics or drug-related? It's not just for anything.
No, sir, it's, well, there, there are restrictions that it can't just be used for anything. Like, like if, if we were to purchase a vehicle, it is highly encouraged that you use that vehicle for law enforcement purposes, that we wouldn't use that, that money to buy a vehicle, and then let the health department, as an example, use it for whatever purposes that they're going to use it for. It needs to be a law enforcement-specific task, but it does not have to necessarily be for fighting drug crime, because there's enough of an argument that you can say that all crime is based off of drug crime, I mean, really, when, when it comes right down to it.
I got one, one other question, Charlie. That 165,000 that you got from the seized money, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, we, don't we give, like, $70,000 a year to, for drug buy money? You do.
Actually, we've got $125,000 recommended for that for next year on page 130, out of the general...
I'll say on that, that covers, that covers multiple...
Yes.
Those two, those two are not together, that, they're separate.
They are separate funds. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then, that's where I go back to, is that, that, you know, I, I have not had a conversation with the sheriff specifically about using drug asset forfeiture money for buy money, but that would be, that would not be my recommendation, just for the simple fact that I, I want to be able to show the people something that we purchased with it, where... able to show the people something that we purchased with it, where buy money is important and could gracious. I could talk about that until I'm out of air of how important that is, but really, the only thing that we can show on that is arrests and court cases that we can link to when it comes to the cases for that. And that may be enough for a lot of folks, but in a lot of ways, I don't know if that will be enough for the public to understand really what we've done with that.
That's true.
Yes.
Charlie, any of that money from joint cases with the feds?
Yes.
All of it?
Yes. Well, I wouldn't say all of it.
But it's not.
I wouldn't say all of it with joint cases. There's a lot of cases. And the reason I say that is that it might technically be joint because there was a federal agent that wrote a case on top of our case.
That's right.
But it might be ninety to ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of Beaufort County time and Beaufort County work, and then we hand it over a box with a ribbon and to get the things. And a lot of reasons why we do that is because there's not, there's not an asset forfeiture law, a state-level law, that it has to be feds. And a lot of ways, it would be great if there was a state case because quite frankly, the feds like to go out, they like to go money hunting, and we want to go after and get dope off the street.
So, is there anything at all in this budget that you could use the seized funds for? Not all of it, but I guess I'm asking, can you pull part of the money?
We have asked through the budget process, we have asked for the commission to appropriate the entire amount.
Okay.
To give us the ability and the leverage throughout the year to use that with going through the policies and procedures of the county and through the board for things that we would need to use that for. I have not had a conversation with the sheriff, and I definitely, before I would speak on it, would have to speak directly to the sheriff on whether we're going to be looking to purchase vehicles again after the last go-round that we had with that. But there's a lot of things that we do, and, you know, the examples that I give in the spreadsheet, there's a color coding that covers the drug unit expenses in our budget, and most often, those items are cut after the budget process because we need to spend that money on other things. And we'll use that drug asset forfeiture money to buy equipment that is used specifically by the drug unit to make their cases work and to be more effective with that, you know. But we also, in years past, we would have, and I know it's probably a bad average, but I'd say probably fifteen thousand dollars a year would be a good history as far as money that's appropriated from drug asset forfeiture. And a lot of times, that covers our need, but sometimes it doesn't. And then we would have to come back and have to have that re-appropriated. We still have to go through all of the policies, and that still may, Chairman, that may free up, you know, anything past the negotiations and past the budget for, I think, where you're going with that. But that is where we are, is that we've asked for as much of those funds to be appropriated in this budget moving into this next fiscal.
And I see it, the color code going all the way through here.
Yes, sir.
Means you're going to use those funds to do those-
And we are not, there is absolutely nothing in the plan right now for us to use all of the funds that we have. You know, we want to continue to use and buy equipment that we need to throughout the year, but if the situation does come and allow that the sheriff says, "Well, let's use a chunk and maybe try to buy a vehicle if we didn't get the ten vehicles that we requested," we go before the board just like we normally would without having the added step of having to reappropriate or do budget amendments or all of that through that. It doesn't cut a corner, it just makes it where it's approved here and then we go through the process later on if we choose to do that and if the board goes along with that.
I got a question. Yes. Anita, how long, how old is this pot of money? It's not a one-year thing. How long did it take to queue up to a hundred and sixty thousand?
I'd have to go back and research that.
It took years, didn't it?
It looks like we, on average, collect about-
Fifteen?
Twenty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, I've got you. I thought maybe we're doing that in one year.
No, no.
No, sir.
We could be spending it in one year.
If I may on that, that is going to fluctuate. We are still receiving money from cases that are ten and fifteen years old that are still going through the process of being adjudicated, and then the money gets distributed through there. And that, I wish we could give you a better detail of when we're going to get it, but for the most part, the finance office will receive an email and then money hits the line. And it might come from a DAG case that we did back twenty years ago and that nobody here remembers, but then you find the paperwork and go back and backtrack and go from there.
Any, I have some questions. Commissioner Richardson.
What is the line item in here that says benevolent donations expense?
Okay. Which I wish that line wasn't in here because it actually looks like we're asking for money and receiving it when, if we were to receive a donation, if someone was to say, "I would like to donate a hundred dollars to the sheriff's office for, you know, for any event, whether it's, you know, us sending out birthday cards or flowers or we have a fundraiser, we sell calendars at each year, and then that fundraiser goes to that line that that covers the Christmas party that we have each year, that the expenses that we have from that line that not, to my understanding, not one dollar is county appropriated dollars, it's all donations and fundraising throughout the year. But for the purposes of a county, we have to show that as an expense in the budget. So, that is what that line is for. So, you wouldn't see any money going in, but you would see money going out as that is used throughout the year.
There's a revenue offset of five thousand on the revenue side.
Okay, because it's got to be. You can't just help.
That's right.
All right. The other question. That rental equipment account, let me be sure I'm on the right line here. No, it's smaller than I thought it was. It's fifteen thousand, well, that's fifteen thousand. The contracts and maintenance line item is thirty-one thousand dollars, and you were talking about someone to service the key system at the sheriff's office, but there's got to be some other stuff in there. I mean, thirty-one thousand dollars in a maintenance agreement is a lot of things to do maintenance on.
And that's probably one of the biggest reasons I give you this spreadsheet, the items. It's a fire alarm, the fire alarm system at the sheriff's office is twenty-eight dollars a month, annual radio maintenance contract for the Viper radios, that's the eight hundred megahertz radios, telecom security system monitoring with the storage units, our outside storages covered, the C board security systems for our drug unit, PIN link service, that is, and that's something that I probably could probably move to the law enforcement information line. That is information that we use when we are tracking locations and information on telephones and cell phones. We use that, the majority of that is when we get a call that says that someone is lost, you know, someone, a hunter is lost in the woods and they have no idea where they are and nothing that they can pinpoint to. If they've got a cellphone, which most people, even when they're hunting, they carry cellphones with them, and we can actually use that information to pinpoint and drill down. If we just use the cell towers, it'll give us a cell tower, so it can give us a lot of room, you know. But when we use that PIN link, it'll give us within four or five meters of where that person is if we get a strength enough. So, that is what that is. The Toshiba Copier annual maintenance, which is a big chunk of money, that's over ten thousand dollars, and then Morpho Track annual maintenance, those are our scan, live scans for fingerprints.
Got you.
That we've gotten, if you remember, we've got two of those now. So, it went from ten thousand dollars for the one, that when we got two, so we can have a live scan in the office and in the detention center, that it went from about ten thousand dollars annually for that service to sixteen thousand. But what that benefit does to us is that it keeps it almost live information. So, if we run fingerprints on somebody who is listed missing or wanted federally, then we know immediately the person that we're dealing with. So, it's not just a static thing, that's a live thing that goes on and a very big benefit to us. But I didn't have the information in front of me, so that was just one example. But those are the things that are covered in that line, Commissioner Richardson.
Law enforcement information, a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yes, sir. That was the line that I said that historically was seventy thousand, and it was only buy money. We had one line, we ought to just call it buy money because that's what it was. It was law enforcement information, but it was right at seventy thousand, and that's what we've used for the last handful of years as buy money. We've taken the items that were all over the budget, that were sort of hidden in different places, and put the items that are, that make sense to put together, we put those together. And that took us from that seventy thousand to where we are now, to the a hundred and twenty-five thousand. But other lines that we had went down along the way or stayed static, even to the point that we were doing different and better stuff with that, with those funds now. But that is the change in the law enforcement information.
A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what? That's about six hundred dollars a day in buy information. That's a lot of money for a small department, six hundred dollars a day. I mean, you almost think somebody's out on the street corners handing out money.
Well, I'm glad that you asked that. I'm glad that you brought that up because for years, you've been saying, "Hey, we need to get this money looked at."
Yeah, we do.
And then the audit, this last year, they went and they spent over a day, they spent about nine and a half hours going through every transaction that went through that seventy thousand dollars. So, in a sixty-million-dollar audit, they spent over a day looking at seventy thousand dollars in the fund, and every dime in that fund has been accounted for and attached to legal documents and court documents and court cases. And the only thing that came across as far as a discrepancy was, was that one day, we were tracking somebody and we were in Pitt County, and the guy that was in a rental car thought that he was burned, and he's a bald-headed guy just like me, we're the easiest ones to burn. So, he stopped at a store, bought an eleven-dollar hat so he can put on his head and not be as that recognizable when he lost his receipt. So, instead of turning in the receipt, we went and we got, he had to do, he got written up, he had to do a memo saying what happened, and we were even at the point where we were going to get a statement from the guy who sold him the hat. So, he ended up doing a whole lot more to make sure that we knew that everything was covered. So, I was going to forget to mention that, but I'm glad that you brought that up and that I hope that in the audit purposes every year.
I'm glad you brought it up too, Charlie, because the way it was described to me was the audit looked good because all the paperwork worked. That, you know, that's still not an audit to me because I don't trust anybody until I begin to see some data and some information that we use so much of this to pay off so many drug dealers and do this and do that with, I still don't know what you're doing with the money.
Every commissioner here has had an open invitation for the last two years to get as much involved with the sheriff's office as you're willing to do. I've told the board in open meetings that I will put you in a surveillance vehicle while we're actually making those deals if you choose to, and I will do that. I will, you know, we are, we try our best to be as transparent as we possibly can, and some commissioners have taken us up on this, you know. Now, once again, I'll offer it, if you would like to, I will put you right in the middle of a deal. It's just the only caveat that I give on that is that those paperwork records are court documents, and those names, you know, is very important. And if we leak that information out, we're not talking about people getting hurt, but we could talk about people getting killed because of that, and we understand that and we would want anybody else involved to understand, to include a commissioner. But, I mean, it's been open for a long time.
I would take you up on that because, I probably will, because that is a lot of money to have to pay for buy information, and I just wonder if we're too, if we're too free with the money. I'm wondering, you know.
Wait. Charlie, while you're thinking, I just did the math. If you take a hundred thousand and divide it by three hundred and sixty-five, that number is two hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. It's not six hundred. Just to set the record straight.
And I thank you, sir, for that. But I'll say that the guys who are out there working cases and they're working the drug cases, we are aggressive and we know that and we understand that. And we get in deep when it comes to trying to divert people from coming into Beaufort County and bringing in this large amounts of dope. That's the biggest thing that we've got going as far as, you look in every county around us, every county around us, and they're dealing with problems that we are just not having to deal with on a daily basis, every direction, not just Pitt County and not just Craven County, but Washington County, Martin County, Hyde County, Pamlico County, they're all dealing with problems that we are not having to deal with on a daily basis. And I'm not saying it's all because of the drug units' work, but a lot of it is. A lot of it is, is that our two biggest issues that we have with crime are drugs and property crimes because of drugs, and we have to combat it all like it's part of the same system because it is. When we get these press releases and these other things where these guys, two or three guys are breaking into forty and fifty homes, they're doing that so they can sell or trade that stuff so they can buy drugs. So, we need to continue to work that. With the funds that we have been allocated over the last handful of years, we have to slow down our drug unit at about nine months into the year. And we can show that by the times that we are taking out sums of money from the account that we have, that we're having to slow down. The last two or three months of the year, we have to do a lot of what we call drug interdiction, which are cold traffic stops because we don't have the funds to use the confidential information that gets the Mr. Big, which you keep on bringing up.
Well, that's right. We're after Mr. Big. But Frankie, by the way, I get closer to three hundred dollars and something a day rather than two hundred and sixty-five when I do my-
You need an Apple Smart.
One of us need to learn how to divide.
And look, if you want to know what that is, by the hour, it's eleven dollars.
I did mine the old way, but that's still a lot of money to be on the street. Now, since you brought that up of having to slow down, in the past, when you have had to slow down, the sheriff's department, you may not have been here when this happened, but we have gone into this money that we were talking about a while ago, the interdiction money, and we have used that money for buy money. We've used that money to supplement so that they could keep going. So, that's been a use of the money in the past, one use of the money in the past.
And it could be a conversation moving forward. Our guys now, this last two years, our drug unit has made more major felony cases than in any other time since I've been here. Russell Davenport, who runs the drug unit, he has had bigger cases and more cases than in the twenty years that he's been working dope in Beaufort County. We are doing the job, and we are at that point where we are running into, you know, we're running out of days, we're running out of funding, we're running out of hours and the days to get to the point where we can get to the next level of operations that we're doing. But I'll also say that over the last handful of years, we're spending more time out of Beaufort County, we're spending more time in Pitt County, in Craven County, in Washington County, trying to combat the avenues that are bringing the drugs in, you know, to try to go after where, you know, once again, to say, "Mr. Big." Mr. Big might not live in Beaufort County, he might live in Greenville. So, Pitt County might get all of the credit for the arrest, but if we do the work at the ground level and get that gun, I don't care who gets the press release, I just want them in prison. And that's the same thing with the drug unit that they have over there.
Charlie, let's move to another question.
Charlie, first, I want to compliment you and the sheriff and your office for what you're doing in the drug area and keeping a lot of these problems out of Beaufort County. You say by the end of the year, about ninety days, you have to slow down. What type, what additional funding would be necessary to give us a full twelve years so we can keep the problems out of our county?
We've, well, since I've been here, we've never seen a hundred thousand. You know, that's continuous what we ask for. We ask for a hundred, we get seventy, and we ask for a hundred, we get seventy. It would be a good test.
With this amount of money?
With this amount of money. And what I wanted to do and what I want to make everybody understand, it's not just the commissioners, but it's the public, is that all of those funds that put in that line, we would like to have the, we would like to have the flexibility to, if we need rental cars, which we do, which we use just about daily, we use a mix between our patrol cars and rental cars when we're doing, conducting surveillance on the cases that we work, that we would like to be able to use the funds within that line to use rentals, to use as buy money, to use as the information that we have to pay for to get from cellphone providers, that we would like to use that chunk of that a hundred and twenty-five thousand for all of the purposes that fit within that line, which it might be that instead of seventy, we use eighty thousand for buy money and the rest of those funds for other things, or it might be that we use a hundred thousand in buy money if that keeps on getting us to where we go. There's no set number that we have because the money that we use for those cases are dependent of what case we have. If we start out here, it might be twenty dollars to somebody who got us started, but then when we get up to the point where we're dealing with four and five kilos, which once again, I'll give you an example of that, we did a four and a half kilo deal that was all ours, all ours, based off of a traffic stop off of River Road that led everybody up. Now, that arrest ended up happening in Greenville with our guys and one officer from Greenville, but that's Greenville's case. About two or three months later, there was a twelve and a half kilos of crystal meth, which we hardly ever see in Beaufort County, that started off in the CI that we used in all of this stuff was from different counties and different places, but the stop started with a deputy who saw something that he just didn't like, had reasonable suspicion for a stop, stopped that, and then three days later, our guys are working in Pitt County, and we get twelve and a half kilos with the help of the SBI and one of the task forces that they have in Greenville. So, just to show you that, there's no- So though, just to show you that, there's no schedule. There's no, all right, well, you get $20 and you get $20. You might have a, you might have a $100 bill that you give for a guy on the deal or you might get up to $2,000 if we're dealing with 10 or 12 or 15 kilos of anything that we're dealing with.
All right, we're, two more questions. You're talking about your staff and the amount of hours they're putting in. I assume if you ever need additional staff, you're going to come back and ask us because again, to keep those problems out of Beaufort County. Are we sufficiently staffed at this point in time? If you don't want to answer it.
No, he feels sufficiently staffed. I'm comfortable under, under the guidance of the sheriff and the direct, the directives that he gave for our budgeting purposes, I'm comfortable with the levels that we are. Now, are there things that we could be doing with more people? Absolutely. And I would never, if the question was, could we cut some different places that we have, then I would say absolutely not. And I'd put it back on, find a place, I mean, find a place where we can.
I wasn't asking you that.
So that, you know, we can, just based on where we are as the overall budget of the county, I feel comfortable and the sheriff feels comfortable with the budget movement.
Now, across the states, opioid is a major problem and everybody's talking about it. And one, a part of that is fentanyl. Have we seen any fentanyl yet here in the county?
Yes, we have. If 10 years ago, if you were to tell me that heroin was going to be the biggest drug problem that we were going to have, I'd laugh at you. You know, we were dealing with 10, 12 years ago, we were dealing with marijuana, we were dealing with a little bit of powdered cocaine. You know, crack would pop up every now and then, but those, I would have laughed at you. But now that's where we are. And we're, we're dealing with heroin, we're dealing with opioids that are ba, the pills that are based off of that, we're dealing with methadone, where the, if there's anything that's related to that opioid, then we're dealing with that. With the heroin that we're seeing, and some of it is, is fentanyl and carfentanil, so I mean, is, is pretty much, it could be a one-shot killer. If somebody goes and they inject any bit that hasn't, that's 200 times stronger than anything else us around there. And then, yes, sir, we are dealing with that.
And I think about micrograms, a dose, two micrograms will kill you. A lot of that stuff's coming out of China and they're inundating the United States with it. Illegal, illicit. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Evans?
I think Ron just asked the question, but to get to that next level, do you, do you have the manpower, other than deputizing seven commissioners?
Six.
Yes, you know, I don't know.
Five.
Four.
None.
Our, our drug unit is, is top-notch. If we were to, you know, if we were to parachute those six guys anywhere in the state, the sheriff there would grab them up in a heartbeat and put them right to work. They're, they're fun to watch, they're fun to work with, it's high energy. If you're, if you are going to take up the opportunity and come right, bring your lunch because it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a day and you're going to put in some work. And you might be in the woods or you might be tracking, tracking people in vehicles or you might, who knows what you're going to be doing. But our six-person unit can take care of what we need to in, in Beaufort County. And, and we, it's right in that sweet spot. We've got, we've got for what we can do, we've got the exact number of people. And I appreciate the board, I was still a relatively new deputy when our unit went from three people and we had to get help every day doing things to six, and then that unit became self-sufficient and we're rocking and rolling today.
Commissioner Langley?
It's just a technical question. How quick a turnaround is it in your restitution for buy money? When you put, when, when a person is sentenced and they reimburse you for the buy, what's the timeframe for you getting? And I know a lot of folk will get put on probation, I know that's a slow process, but just an idea, do you have it?
If we're dealing with local restitution here in our courts, then it's pretty quick. It'd be within, within a calendar year, I'd say, pretty quick. If we're talking about stuff from federal and the money that comes back from that, and like I said, we're getting, we're getting money from cases 15 and 20 years ago that's on those. But the local stuff is pretty good and we, we're pretty aggressive on that, is that we track the money that we use to the point where we, you know, make photocopies and we try to compare dollars and we try to get back everything we can at the, at the bust that we do. But we try to get back that money as much as we can and within the calendar year if it's a local case would be what, so.
We'll take one more question and then we're going to move into the jail.
This may be, this is a question kind of for you and Mr. Hedges. It's my understanding that some of the drugs out there now are so toxic, the dust from some of these drugs that we're sending some guys out, they brush some residue and it's pretty bad.
There was an out-of-state case that's pretty local, that officer who was searching a vehicle brushed up against drugs and actually overdosed.
That's what I heard.
You know, and, and that was, that goes back to the heroin that was laced with carfentanil. That, I mean, it's dangerous stuff, but, you know, and, and I don't want to make light of anything that goes, but you know, if, if law enforcement train, every year we go over and of the dangers and, you know, I say to the guys all the time and we talk about it, that, you know, we don't bake cookies for a living, you know, and there's always going to be dangers to, to anything that we, that we do when it comes to the enforcement side. And we do receive training on, on things like that, but that's, that there's always going to be risks of things that we do. And we've seen a lot, we've seen a lot that'll never get on, on the news as far as folks that are booby-trapping drugs and, you know, folks that are, that are locking up and setting traps in vehicles and then the things like that, of you, you're just dealing with the stuff that's out there that'll kill you. So, but thank you for the question.
Can we move to the jail?
Yes, sir.
Or detention center, I guess, is the.
Yes, I'm still a little old school, I call it a jail.
Well, we've used both. On the front page, we use detention center and when you flip over to detail, we're using jail.
Yes, sir. Several things that are going on with the jail this year as far as the budget goes is that there is a change as far as the inmate medical with the partnership with the health department. You know, some funds are being moved from, that would normally be considered under the jail budget that are moved over to health. So that's going to show a change in that. And one of the things I did want to mention is, is that that, you know, best-case scenario, and right now we're still on schedule for that, is that that changeover is going to be October 1st. So for three months, we're going to have to have Southern Health Partners, we're going to have the same exact thing that, that we've got right now and then change over in October. So there are going to be some added costs this year that we shouldn't see next year because of that. So in the line and the spreadsheet that I, that I gave you gentlemen, you'll see that, that the professional health services, where they are showing to be down, that still covers Southern Health Partners at $65,000. The health department piece that we're going to pay, that we're going to pay through that through mainly supplies, you know, the medical supplies and things like that, that we're going to have to have on hand, is going to cover that $63,000. And then the correctional behavior health or the mental health piece, the telemedicine piece, that is covered and probably unless something changes, that piece is always going to remain in the budget because the health department, I do not believe is, they are capable or ready to do that, provide that service. So that, that is a change. The overtime in the, in the jail, we're asking for a little bit more money on that to move from $35,000 to $50,000 on that. The main driver for that are two things. One is that we're looking, we're having to use detention officers and jailers for a lot more tasks than what we would have to over the last five or 10 years. You know, we're changing things with, with the policies that we have and with the recommendations that came from the NIC through the jail and justice assessment, to try to make the jail as safe a place as we can make it by using people power. You know, we, we've increased the, the level of cameras and the service that the surveillance will do, but, but that only covers a little bit. I mean, we all know that the, just eye fatigue itself, you can't sit a person in front of 20 screens and expect them to catch anything over an extended period of time. So it takes people power, making those rounds and extra rounds through the jails in a jail that we have a lot of nooks and crannies and, and things like that. So, so that, that covers the, that piece and then training. For, for years and years, our detention officers received a minimum amount of training required by the state to be detention officers. Over the last couple of years, we've increased the level of training for de-escalation of hostile encounter training and also defensive tactics training. So the detention officers are receiving more training like a patrol deputy would and in turn making it where they have to call the patrol deputies off the street to handle an issue in the jail less. So, so those things, I'm actually very proud of the, of the folks that are down there. We've, you know, we've hired well, we've retained well and we've trained well over the last two or three years and it's showing it through the level of professionalism that has been shown by the guys in the jail every day. And then the fun one, inmate safekeeping. Last years passed, that number has gone from anywhere from $100,000 to $400,000 to $300,000 as far as what is actually budgeted. A couple of years ago, well, three years ago, that number spiked when, if you remember when power went out based off of the storm and a couple of other electrical issues and we had to evacuate the jail for, I know it was over two months, but for an extended period of time and safekeeping went up over $650,000 that year. So that was definitely the spike and the anomaly. You know, since then, the budget has been different numbers. Last year, we, we went with $135,000 because that was based on a historical actuals over the last couple of years. This year, safekeeping budget for a lot of different reasons is, is up in between, is going to be $350,000 or $360,000 as of this year. And, and there's nothing, there's nothing right now that's, that's going to show that we are, that anything is going to be different moving into next year as far as how things go. But we're, we're through discussions and, and negotiations with the county manager, the number that's being put before you is 150,000 and that hopefully we can keep it under that amount just based off of what we have. But if we get to the point where we have a storm or we have anything else going on or we're having to constantly keep anywhere from between 20 and 30 inmates out of our jail at any given time, then we're going to have to come back to the commissioners and say, what's going on? Show everything that we've got. We could show you every bill, we're not paying it, we're not writing the checks for it, we can show you every invoice, we can show you every name, we can show you every date of where they go. So I mean, we, our records are your records. So you can, you can see with, with your own eyes what's needed and what's going to go on there. But that, that's where we're starting out this year. And that is really no different than how we started out last fiscal year. There were several conversations starting about October and November that I have with individual commissioners, letting you know that, hey, this, this is going to be a big year because of Matthew, because of the amount of people that we've got in, in different jails and things of that nature. So it was, the 350 or 360,000 was not a surprise to me and it shouldn't have been a surprise to the board. If we go back and look at the public meetings that we had, that we had those discussions to include the budget, I guess this is a budget workshop, but the, the breakaway sessions that we had at the college this year, we had a discussion about that as well.
When you, when you think about the fact that we're going to have to do some work in the jail, I, I just think this number is, is low.
That really, I mean, the number that we have here doesn't reflect, you know, having to evacuate the jail to do those repairs.
If, if we do it, I'm assuming it would fall in this particular line item, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be placed anywhere else?
It depends. I mean, if we do an overall project, it may, we may move those funds in, well, maybe not, probably not, sorry. But we don't know that number yet. We don't have a good estimate yet from the contractor, came in and looked at it, how long he thought it would take him to be able to do what he needed to do in there. Until we know that, we can't estimate.
If you, if you look at that number, that's based on an average of 10 per day during the year at $45. Law park figure. And if it goes to 20, it just doubles.
Yes, sir.
But I, I understand that, you know, you can come back and ask for, ask for another appropriation.
The way that the sheriff has explained it to me in our talks with him is that he actually goes back to the 2014 budget with the way that he wants us to budget this, is that there was, at the end of that budget, the sheriff's office showed a huge surplus. I mean, it was close to $500,000. And at the end of that year, that money went all kinds of different directions. The only thing that I'll speak about was that we did, we were able to purchase more vehicles. And at the end of the year, we, we caught up with that. But that money went in all kinds of different directions and that, that didn't sit well with commissioners, that didn't sit well with the sheriff. I don't think anybody was really happy at the end of the day of how that broke down. So then moving forward as far as budgeting, the sheriff was more comfortable and the county manager and finance officer was more comfortable about those numbers that we could way elevate it and then never use it and then it show a surplus and then it shows that, you know, oh, we performed well, whether we probably didn't. We probably didn't perform all that well, but we had that big surplus. We would rather not have that. We would rather ask for the minimum and then incrementally add to that so by the end of the year, there's not going to be this, this possibility of everybody sort of grabbing into the cookie jar and throwing money in 14 different directions. So that, that is how we see it from our side and, and I hope that that makes sense to the, to the board.
Going, going one step further with the inmates safekeeping. Four of the commissioners were in Raleigh two weeks ago at a seminar and we heard people in other counties talk about nail, I mean, a jail navigator and a jail, what was the other term?
Coordinator.
Coordinator. I'm, I'm assuming that we've got somebody that maybe wears several hats that are trying to coordinate.
If, if, if those positions are towards looking at your inmate population and trying to make sure that nobody's spending too much time in the jail, I would argue that Commissioner Richardson is our jail navigator. He keeps a lot of pressure on the district attorney's office and clerk's office and everything like that. I, I don't, I don't feel that we need to ask for one of those if Commissioner Richardson is doing it anyway. But that, that is, it's been talked about, well, a couple of years ago, the jail administrator and I went to Pitt County because they have a pretty aggressive program, that they, they do just that. Here, it'll come up from time to time, but I, you know, I, I feel that, that the district attorney, I'll say this, as far as jail cases, as far as jail cases go, they're pretty quick. Now, as far as the overall docket, our docket is huge in Beaufort County and, but for the folks that we actually have in custody, then I, I think that the DA's office with a little bit of a nudging from one of the commissioners, I think they do pretty good on, on jail cases.
I will say for the last two to three years that the district attorney has done a good job when he became aware that there was a situation of doing something about it because the reports are there and I, I just review them once a month.
Now, Chairman, we will have, there are several times that we don't like it where somebody will be arrested for a charge that they're probably not going to see active time for. You know, they might get arrested because they were causing, probably they were drunk, causing a problem in the street, they get charged with disorderly conduct and then they sit, they sit in jail for 15 or 20 days. Now, our, our folks in the detention center will let the district attorney know that and so they can try to make that case, either they plead guilty and receive the time served or whether that something's done on that. And that, that occurs every, every day that we've got court, they'll look through the numbers that we have and try to expedite those cases if we can.
Charlie, how many do we average that are being housed off-site?
This, this last, for budgetary purposes, I looked at last calendar year and we were right at the 15, 16 housed off-site every day. Now, that was a number that would go up to 25 would be, 25 or 26 would be the high number and four or five would be the low number. And that covers every reason that we would have somebody housed off-site. That is either medical safekeeping or behavioral safekeeping or keepaways, what we call them, the things where four or five people are arrested and they're all incarcerated and we can't possibly keep them in the same building without them talking to each other before the case is heard for medical purposes. For all of the reasons that we have that we send people away would be covered in that number. But the average was about 15 or 16 last calendar.
And is $45 a good number?
Yes. That, that is, that is the, that is the number that we can charge each other, you know, so for, for that, whether it costs more or costs less, that's the number that facilities can charge each other when we're housing each others.
Now, when they house someplace else and they require medical care, do we pay for that?
Yes. We do that and also, an example, say we're housing an inmate in Washington County or vice versa. And say they get hurt and go to the hospital, then Washington County, they will send a deputy to sit with that person and they will make contact with us and go, you've got a guy in the hospital and then we have to send a deputy to go relieve them because it is our inmate, our responsibility. Washington County, Washington County are easy because it's one county over, but we've had to make trips to Sampson County, to Durham County, you know, we've, wherever our inmates go, those are our inmates. our inmates go, those are our inmates. So I mean, if, if it's a Sampson County jail, it might as well be the Beaufort County jail because we've got to take care of our guys if they're.
And do we use our deputies to transport them?
Sir?
Do we use our deputies to transport them?
We use sworn law enforcement to transport. We use patrol deputies. We use school resource officers. We use bailiffs. We use command staff. We use anybody that we can at any given time to take care of whatever transports that we need. But we do, we do have it where it's a sworn law enforcement officer that's taking that trip.
And how many positions would you say in a year's period are allocated to form those functions? Do you know off the top of your head?
Well, I mean, there's 50, 56 sworn that we have, but you know, to give you a realistic number on that, the majority of our, of our transports are going to be bailiffs. We've got four bailiffs, five bailiffs assigned at a time. They handle a good knot of them. School resource officers when they're not in school, you know, so summertime they help out, they might as well be bailiffs during the summertime. That's what we use them for a lot. And then patrol guys, we've got five deputies per shift. And if, if we're at the point where we just can't drag manpower out, that is not working to come in and take the transport, then somebody off the road takes that trip. So if you look at it that way, you're looking at 35 positions that cover all of the transports that we have with the 20 on patrol, eight, eight that we have as far as the school resource officers.
It's not 35 positions a year.
Well, those are the positions that we draw from that pool.
But I guess what I'm asking is, is it four position? Excuse me. Is it four positions? Is it five positions? Is it three positions?
I really wouldn't be comfortable giving you an answer if, I mean, because the way that I'm, I'm hearing you is if we were to have a dedicated transport team, how many people it would take to do that? And I, I would just be guessing.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you looking at some of your reports? You got inmates as four ways, Morganton, North Carolina. What dictates where you send them at? Is there space available? I mean, because if you've got one guy that's just in all the way to Morganton and you can send him to Pitt County or Bertie County or somewhere like that.
If, if you see Morganton, if you see foothills, which is normally Morganton, that's a juvenile facility. You know, so we're very limited on what we can do there. But for the most part, if you see the outlying western part of the state, it's a prison issuance and we just have to take them wherever and say that they can take them. Local, you know, I, I wish I could tell you that we, we could, we had a relationship with Pitt County that we could take folks to them, but we, we just can't. They've got their own issues with overcrowding. So a lot of times with us, we've partnered with Pamlico County. They've done a lot of work for us. Lenore County has done a lot of work for us and Sampson County has done a lot of work with us. Dare County has helped us out a lot in keeping the people that we know are going to be in jail for a long time and they don't have a case docketed. So they'll take 10 or 15 people at a time, knowing that we can take them there, leave them there for weeks, months at a time if we need to, as long as the numbers aren't right and then come back and get them one, at one fell swoop.
Anyone else? You ready to go to the next one?
I can.
I'd say you or Vic who, who's taking the communicate. Or is that Brian?
This, this one ought to be pretty easy.
Oh, it is. It is. I write down here flat.
I think, and I want to say it might be a little down, right? I mean, so if it's flat, it's lean, at least leaning downwards.
With our communications budget, we, last year, with the support of the commissioners, you allowed us to, to finish up our project with emergency medical dispatch, which is absolutely huge. And with that, you increased the amount of full-time telecommunications that we had by four and then, and then allowed us to have a quality assurance position as well. And we've taken that, we, we're trying to do the crawl, walk, run approach. We're not just hiring anybody who is a warm body. We're taking our time to make sure that we've got good qualified people because we are asking them to do things that are, not just anybody can do. You know, people are, the folks that are in there, they have to do, be able to hear three or four different things at any given time and pick out the information that they need to get out to the people that, that they need, the resources that they need to get to in a timely manner because lives are at stake with every call that they do. So we have, we, we've had a really good year when it comes to the communications budget. I think that we did a, we did a, I'll say fairly adequate job of budgeting those lines that we needed to pick up to cover the addition of those positions. So you would see a little bit of adjustment in, in several of the lines, but the adjustments that we could make in a downward direction, I feel that we did.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Without spending a lot of time on contract services, explain to me what all that entails. $82,000, that's a lot of money, that's why I'm asking.
Sure. The 911 Center covers the communications hub for the county. And so a lot of that money is going to be for vendors that come in and do the work, maintenance work on the entire communication system, whether it be the computers that are inside of our building, the servers that are in our building, the lines. And I mean, I'm, I learn every day from just the teleconferences that I'm in and the webinars that I go to and just, just listening to Vic as we have our discussions about it. There's a lot that goes into it and I think Vic has done an absolutely fantastic job of getting that, the whole communication system, but the 911 Center where it needs to go. So the, every dollar of that line is, is towards vendors that cover all of everything from the hardware to the software and also to the point of, I get back to, if we have a storm, if we have a hurricane that comes through and wipes out our radio system, if we have service contracts with these people, then they might be a little bit more obligated to get their trucks up to help us as opposed to it be with a county that does not have those contracts in place. So that was one of those things that when Vic came in, that we had very little as far as service contracts and we wanted to bolster that up. So we would be getting towards the front of the line if we have any issues. And we've had several, several times over the last couple of years where we would have at least, at least part of our 911 system go down, that we would still be able to function, but we make a phone call within the hour, we're, folks are showing up in their trucks and we're getting our system back up. So it, it is a cost, but it is, is paying dividends for, for us in that system.
Okay.
This, this may be for Vic, our redundant system or our contract with Craven County, is that up and running?
Yeah, we're.
Working okay?
We're very close on that. July 1, 2017 is when everything's supposed to be up and running. As you well know, we went, when we first started looking into this when I got here, the number was scaring a million dollars to death. And I, it just didn't make sense to me to spend that kind of money for something that you may never have to use. And if you do have to use, let's face it, if the building burns down and we have to send people to Craven County, within a month, we're going to have some mobile trailers over here and we're going to have our people back here working. We're going to make it happen. So it's not something you're going to go over there and occupy for months and months at a time. To date, we're just over $100,000. We run into, we got an approval from the state of North Carolina on our backup plan and then they squashed it a few weeks ago on letting us put a backup server in the server room in the courthouse. Said the buildings were too close and if one caught fire, they both burned. I said, it ain't going to happen. Nevertheless, with the help of our IT staff and the people that the county contracts with, we put our heads together. We got another plan to put our backup server in the cloud, which is going to be virtually about the same amount of money. So we're getting ready to take back off and move again. So it's been a difficult project. Any of y'all ever had to deal with the state of North Carolina 911 Board or had any conversations with them? It's not fun, but we're getting there.
So July the 1st is?
July the 1st is the, is the deadline. They are giving some leniency to those that have had hiccups in trying to get things going. You know, this problem we got right now, I sat down there with them in February and reviewed all of our invoices and the plan again to make sure everything was on board. And then they come back here a month ago and say, eh, we're not going to let you put it in the courthouse. I said, come on, folks. Well, the reason they came back to me is because the few days after I left them in February, I sent their financial officer invoices because I wanted them to email me back and say, this is fundable, this is not. So I know this is coming out of the 911 fund, this has to come out of my communications budget. I don't want any surprises. And I handled them every week. And then finally they come back and said, you can't put that server in the basement and that's the reason we're not going to get your invoices back yet because we're not in favor of that now. So now we're back on going to this in the cloud deal and hopefully we'll have all that worked out here in a couple of days and we move forward. So, any more questions?
Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you. We're down to the emergency services. As many of you know, this is the EMS week, May the 21st through the 27th. And I realize that we're not supposed to have a motion or a second or a vote or anything, but if, if I could just have a nod maybe of consent from each one of you that we have a resolution that I may read. Everybody's nodding.
Read it.
Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill again by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of special training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment of emergency medical service providers every day, but especially during emergency medical services week. Now therefore, the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the week of May the 21st through the 27th, 2017 as Emergency Medical Services Week and extend its sincere appreciation to all providers in the emergency medical services system, May the 23rd, 2017. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we're ready for your budget.
All right. Thank you for recognizing that, force commissioner.
I'd say Brian, I guess.
So just a couple of things again, this was a re, this was kind of a reshuffle when we, when we moved or when the emergency, when the EMS director, we moved that position to the emergency services director. So essentially Carney's going to talk from the perspective of the emergency services department. He's got a couple of things that he wants to talk to you about in, in the structure. Essentially on page 135, you see the structure, you've got the emergency services director, you've got animal control as a division underneath that, you've got EMS as a division underneath that and then fire slash emergency management as a division underneath that, that department. Couple of name changes I think he wants to make on some of the people we want to shift as part of the budget, just, just move some people around. Actually, he's just going to move one around. Originally, there was a, there was an administrative person, an EMS specialist person in EMS. And then there is a emergency management specialist person. I think Carney's looking to move that position, an admin position. That way the support from the emergency services office can filter down to EMS, animal control and emergency management to help them administratively on some things that they need. And then I think overall, he's looking to, to, to name those operations chiefs. I mean, right now they're chief animal control officer and EMS operations and training officer and, and fire marshal and emergency management. And I think what he'd like to do is simply change those to, to operations chiefs. So you've got an animal control, you're still going to have, what do you tell them?
Under animal control, because of verbiage we saw in, in other state regulations, we're going to leave that as chief animal control officer for clarity. But each of the other divisions currently, Glenn is serving as our operations chief for EMS. And in the same thing, we had John's position was director of emergency management. And just for clarity of things and trying to keep everything across the board, just like to make a title change for an operations chief of fire and emergency management.
And you'll see that on the order chart on page 37.
In addition to what manager Ali Good said, under the EMS or emergency medical services budget, we did have an EMS specialist which served as administrative role. And in the reorganization, I'd like to, to move, that's Angie, she's doing us a great job administratively, but change her title to administrative specialist, which would not cause confusion for some of our outside people calling in and trying to figure out what's going on, but be more in line with exactly what she's doing and be utilized to all of emergency services, including helping out the animal control.
That's just a title change.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I want to, I guess going into EMS on page 137, again, we talked about this in the introduction, that the big change in this was the pickup of the Washington township where we are, where y'all approved us moving in and being in the Old Ford Fire Department and putting an ambulance there to cover that area. That is, that is reflected in here. You'll also see that's reflected in the, in the authorized positions going from 27 to 34. If you had to answer any specific questions, Carney can answer any questions. Glenn's here if we want to. On the EMS side, to answer any of those specific questions that you may have. Obviously, there's some additional, there's some additional equipment that comes into play with that. There's some additional medical supplies that comes into play with that. One of the other big things in the EMS budget is the remount of the EMS. It's time for us to remount one of the ambulances that we have. And that's simply where you take the box, you pull the box off, you put it on a new chassis and you rework the box and clean the box up and, and then you're ready to go again for, again for the life of the chassis again, so.
The, the one that's in the budget under capital, is that the one that we talked about maybe two months ago?
It is. It's the one Glenn mentioned at, at the retreat.
So we're using the same, if my terminology is right, the same box on the back, but it's a new vehicle?
That's correct.
Yeah, essentially you just, you just pull, pick the box up, put a new chassis underneath and sit it down and they rework the box and clean it up and, and make any change, you know, check the wiring, make sure everything's right and, and go again.
That's the one that we got from White Oak? Is that?
Yes.
I think the current chassis has around 400,000 miles on it.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Okay.
Are you satisfied that we are billing for 100% of the calls that we make in EMS?
Make sure I'm clear, clear. I want to make sure I understand your question.
We, we are not billing for every EMS call that we run. We can't bill for every EMS.
Why not?
Because there may be a, a, a call where we're dispatched and there isn't anything or we may show up and the patient's left. I mean, anytime we do a medical intervention, we are billing for that call. But there, but, but we can't say with 100% that every call we go to, we're billing for. Nobody, nobody can.
How do you account for calls that are no action calls?
When you say, how do we account for them? Billing wise?
No. How do you account for them?
We do an ACR on every call. If, if we get dispatched, an ACR, an ambulance call report should be generated that shows that, that dispatch happened and then the outcome of the call. So if we get canceled en route, there's not going to be a charge to anyone for that call. Or if we get there and there's no patient found, the response still happened, but there's no charge that's going to be taking place in that.
But every time there's a patient, you're satisfied that they're getting a bill, we're collecting money either from Medicare, Medicaid, insurance company or the individual?
Anyone that receives medical care is getting a bill. Whether the bill is, is completely paid or not, that would be back in collections. But they are being charged if care was given to the patient.
What if you go to a, to a site and the person that's there says, you know, I don't want to go anywhere, I don't want to go here, fine. You give them some service, check blood pressure and all of that, do they get a bill?
There is a treatment, no transport in that if we get called, we have a duty to make sure that everything's okay. So there may be general things, general vital signs that are done if there's any doubt whatsoever that the person is completely confident and able to make a decision. And so we might do the vital signs, ask their permission to do that, but then they say, I don't want to go to the hospital and we've really done nothing other than assessment. There's no charge for that.
Why?
They may not have called. They may not have called. It may have been someone that saw them, they may have been what appeared to be staggering down the road, and we get there and end up that they have some kind of ailment, that that's just their normal way of walking. I mean, we have all kinds of false calls like that that could come into play. Medically speaking, if we go and, let's say if it's a diabetic emergency or something that we do any kind of treatment other than an assessment, then there is a bill that is attached with that.
The patient may refuse our further treatment, especially like on a diabetic. You go in, you wake a diabetic up, you give them an amp of D-50, and they come around, they say, I'm fine, I don't want to go to the hospital. We charge them a treat no transport charge of $150. But his comment was, you get in a fender bender, and somebody goes by and they call the ambulance, fire truck shows up, ambulance shows up, and they come to you and say, you want to be, you know, a session, you say, I'm fine, leave me alone, I don't want to go anywhere. And we don't charge them for that because we didn't do anything.
Any other question?
I do think Carney, on the EMS side, there is one piece that he wants to add to our fee schedule, and that is a standby fee.
Yes. We've just had an incident occur where we've got a federal government's coming in to do some training in our county. And in that, they're bringing their pocketbook for the training, and they want to pay for standbys and things like that. And we see that we did not have an established fee schedule. So we want to go ahead and put one in place that we would have for things that come forward with that. And looking around at, from agencies such as the government agency FEMA, to looking at what other agencies around us may charge in other counties, I'd like to put a fee schedule in for an ambulance with a crew of $134 an hour.
$134?
$134 an hour. And I could have rounded that off, but I was just going with the fee schedule as the government is showing. Now, I would like to say with that, that's not to say that every time our ambulance is sitting somewhere, we're going to charge that fee. For instance, we've got several events that are going to happen this weekend, which we know large amounts of people are going to go to, such as in Bath, such as in Aurora. And so we're going to be ready for that with our EMS truck just for getting in and out. They haven't requested us, but we're still going to stand the truck up ready for that. And of course, there wouldn't be any charge for doing something like that. That's just routine business for us.
Typically, when we have a standby unit, they're dedicated to that. They're dedicated, they're going to stay there because they're paying us to be there. And we've got other resources that are covering. What sometimes you'll see is, we may go to a football game, but we're there, well, let me back up because I think they're required to be there, but used to be. But if they show up at a scene and they're asked to come, we might not charge them, but we're not guaranteed to be there. If we have to be guaranteed to be there, there'll be a standby charge that goes with that.
Yes. Is any charging can be done with a QRV?
I don't think we have the ability to charge for the QRV as far as it comes under Medicare and Medicaid.
It's got to be the unit that transports. Now, what we are working through is if we have an instance where, and we're still trying to work that out, but if we have an instance where we have an intermediate-level ambulance or a basic life support ambulance, and we put our QRV paramedic on that ambulance and make it a paramedic-level ambulance, then we're working through that situation about how we can bill that and bill that at a higher level so that we can get a little bit back and then the transport unit can get a little bit as well. But that's still, we're still working through all that because there's a lot of complications in doing that.
What if the QRV operator goes and gives medical service? You still can't charge for it?
I think under the treatment no transport, we're able to do that, but there's no transport fee that can be attached to that.
Right. But you can charge them for treatment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other? Yes, Commissioner?
Off the top of your head, do you know how many lives that we've saved?
We recognize that at the banquet, I was one week coming in. And Glenn, do you remember the numbers of the saves of what we actually put out for the county?
Thirty-seven. Thirty-seven. I remember that.
Everybody's flat, they're flatlined, they're dead, basically, and we bring them back.
Twenty-seven that were transported with a pulse to the hospital, nine walked out.
So 27 we revived.
Thirty-seven percent.
Okay, but we revived them, take them to the hospital, and nine walk out. That's 37%. Very good. Congratulations.
And if I may, I just want to publicly thank Glenn. He did an outstanding job as the operations chief in coming in, in preparing a lot of the leadway for the budgets. In my timeframe, I came in, taking things from where they were and trying to help it move forward, and he just did a really good job with it, very accurately. Thank you for that, Glenn.
So you're saying we hold him responsible?
Yeah, we want 45%.
I was hoping he wouldn't catch that.
Any other question? Emergency management, is that?
Yeah, so the big piece on this one, you know, we talked about there's a significant increase in this budget, but it's mostly from moving, it's moving Carney's position, which was originally the EMS director position, over under this budget. Again, on the org chart, Carney's sitting here with the divisions underneath him, but for budget purposes, his position, the emergency services director position is being paid out of the emergency management budget. We didn't rework the whole thing and say, here's an emergency services budget, because we would have to just set up a one-person department, and Carney would have been the only one in, so it really didn't make sense. We moved it into the emergency management budget. So that's there. And then, of course, we talked about in the introduction, we did put some part-time money in there in case we needed some additional assistance in being able to follow through on the FEMA grants in the elevation projects that we have underway right now, just getting those completed and getting those done.
Is this your budget or is this Brian's?
It is my budget. Again, John started this, and I came in and did some adjustments of it in my timeframe in, but yes, sir.
Any questions?
I got just one quick one. In line item professional development, what does that entail? I know it's on all the budget lines.
Training. Yeah. It's basic training in the emergency management realm. We've been fortunate that really every staff member in our office, we're working together, whether it is EMS, emergency management or such, has jumped on to help with the emergency management-specific training. So any of that training that would be for emergency management will come out of this budget.
While you were up there, you want to go ahead and do chief animal control?
Absolutely.
Animal. Any questions on the animal control budget?
I have a request on animal control budget.
Yes, sir.
I want to know, I want a phone call every time you transport a horse.
That means he's available to go with you, Carney?
No. That means I'm going to be looking to see whether it was necessary or not.
I'll put that request in.
Stop his house with a saddle.
You know, you can buy a saddle where he sits up front and you sit right behind him.
Most of the saddles I have are single-sater.
I think you guys are riding side saddle.
If there's no other question, we're ready for a break, it looks like.
Thank you, sir.
Stand to page 141, animal control. Brian?
Actually, you get animal.
We let that guy go.
Good.
That's forestry.
I'm ready to talk to you about forestry administration.
I apologize to you, Brian.
That's okay. I can talk about it if you want me to, but.
Just so you know.
I don't want to repeat it.
Let's leave it in the forest, you're probably not going to have a fire tonight since it's been raining all day.
The forestry service piece is, again, under a contract that you have where you, the expenditures are funded at a rate of 60% by North Carolina. You provide 40%. Their budget is flat from last year, and unless they have a big fire or something in Beaufort County, we usually don't, there's usually not an issue.
Any questions on forestry? If not, of the emergency service.
Other emergency services, page 135, you'll see, this is where you got a big increase. That's where, this is where we showed the contract with the city of Washington, so that's not in there anymore. So that was 154 that came out. But this is the allocation to the Sydney dive team, the money that you provide for the volunteer fire department, fire safety house, and then the medical examiner. And really, the only one in here that's an unknown is the medical examiner. You're required to pay for ME cases by the state, and it just depends how many medical folks.
So that's his salary, basically, for what he does for us?
It is per body.
Yeah.
There's a flat fee.
It's not a salary. Based on volume.
You're required to pay for that, so.
See, you did.
Sometimes there are a lot of ME cases, and sometimes there are not a lot of ME cases. And not all of them are. Usually, if it's an unattended death, or if it's a death of somebody who doesn't have a medical provider who's willing to sign a death certificate, then it turns out being an ME case, or if there's suspicious activity.
That's what a medical provider is good for.
But usually, so it just depends.
Okay. You want to go into special revenues?
Yes, sir. This is, these are your special revenue funds, which are restricted and they have to be spent. They're legally restricted for the activities that go on. So the E-911 phone system, that's where you get money back from the state for E-911 services, the seized funds, the fire and rescue tax districts, the revow fund that we talked about in our discussion, and the economic development fund. So on page 148, you'll see the revenue side. On page 149, you'll see the expenditure side. They do balance. I assure you, they balance. So on the left, on page 148, you'll see the 911 revenues. Those are the revenues that come in, the surcharge from the state, then there's a state grant. We're not showing that this year, but sometimes we end up with a state grant, and if we do, there'll be a budget amendment that goes down on that. Fund balance appropriated, the 911 fund is a restricted fund that sits over on the side, so if there's extra money that comes in, it sits there so that it does have a fund balance. So we're anticipating some fund balance appropriated there. And then on the right side, you'll see the expenditures that go with the 911. You can't, or you can, now, they'll do a little bit of training, but we're not showing any money allocated for training, 911 services, the telephone stuff, maintenance, hardware, furniture, and then capital. And those are all, that's the battle that Vic fights every day with the folks from 911 because from the state, we have to turn those receipts into them, show them what we spent the money on, and then they'll go back and say, we either approve it or we don't approve it. Sometimes it depends on who's looking at it.
I speak to the training piece?
Sure.
I just don't want you all thinking we're not training. The training piece is, the state North Carolina 911 board only allows certain things for training. And this past year, they basically took the whole list down off the website. You couldn't even find what they would approve. So if there is things that we can run through that, we'll try to funnel it through it, but they're very hard to get any training through. You get them to fund it. We are training. Don't let them misunderstand.
So that's essentially the 911 piece of it. And there's no, I mean, there's no county dollars in that. That's the surcharge that comes on your phone that's set by the state. It used to be it was set locally, and then they took that away from the counties. And they did that when wireless got real big because the state took over the wireless, and they said, well, we'll just take over everything. The next piece on the left side is the seized funds revenue. You'll see that we're anticipating, under the unauthorized substance tax, about $10,400 miscellaneous income.
Not sure. Do you know what that is, Charlie? Miscellaneous income on the seized funds?
No, no write-off pan, because everything sort of gets slumped in, whether it's, we're talking about the, Mr. Martin spoke about, whether it's restitution piece, you know, it can come in, it gets slumped in, or whether it's part of the federal or state case that comes in, it's obviously gets slumped in every month, so.
And then there's fund balance appropriated because the request, as you'll see on the right side, the request is to expend $168,400. So that essentially zeroes out that fund for this year.
Wait a minute. That's to spend on the seized funds, to spend all that money this year? We're going to need to talk about that. You want to talk about it, Dan?
Yes, sir. This is the time.
Well, you know, there's, what do you want to use the money for, Charlie?
I mentioned it the first time I was up here. We're looking to appropriate, have all of those funds appropriated. That doesn't mean that we're going to look to spend all of them, but that just goes through, each year, we've been appropriating about $15,000 through the budget process. For this one, if we appropriate all of those funds, whether it's used later on to buy vehicles or whether it's used to buy piecemeal equipment that we need, that we're not going to cover through equipment through the drug unit, and that just covers that one step. We're still going to have to go through the policies and procedures that are set forth by those board that we have to do legally, and if we come up to the limit on whatever it is that it has to be approved by the board, and it's still going to have to come up for approval on there.
So why do we want to do this, then? What you described is a zero-sum exercise.
Why we are looking to do this is a part of the process. If the part of process, a random number of $15,000 was picked for appropriations. If we win anything over that $15,000, then we would have to go to the finance officer with budget amendment or request, the quotes, go through the process, go through the board, have to wait for board approval, and then have to wait for everything else to come back for us to do to make a purchase on it. If we appropriate the amount that we're asking to do, which is all of those funds, then that takes away some of the time on it, but we would still have to go through every safeguard that would be in place for you.
The intent of the law was that that money not be appropriated and dumped and turned over as a line item. That was the intent of the statute. That's why it's separate.
So on this, from my understanding of that, that's going to be, that's the request that we are asking. That is for the debate of the board, when then the decision's going to be made over the board of how much is going to be appropriated for the use next year. But we are still, if there comes a request that we are going to have, whether all of the funds are appropriated or not, then we will still go through the process that we are set based on the policies that are set by those board.
But always in the past, we've had, outside of the budget process, we've had a request for the appropriation or the use of some of the funds, and the commissioners have approved that or disapproved, depending on what it was. I mean, I don't think by law, we can turn the funds over to the sheriff. That wasn't the intent of the statute.
That is not what is happening. Every year, money is appropriated for that line by the commissioners. Every year. We're asking for the same things.
That's only started happening in the last four or five years because I became aware four or five years ago that we were no longer approving these as individual items outside of the budget as we had always historically done. So what, Charlie, I will say this, and you're going to get mad at me, but what has happened is you guys got a little bit of sugar, now you got greedy, you want all of it. The commissioners should not turn this over to the sheriff. That wasn't the intent of the law to begin with. And I'll be reading the statute because I think you guys are way out of line.
I appreciate you reading the statute. I've read the statute, past tense, read it, know what's going on with it. The reason that we're doing this is a matter of debate between the board. We've already discussed that those funds, is that the sheriff gets to decide what it's used, and then it's approved or not approved by the appropriations.
No, not the sheriff decides. Well, you're using wrong terminology again. The sheriff doesn't decide what it's used for. It's a mutual thing that requires the board of county commissioners and the sheriff to agree on what the funds are used for.
And that's actually, you said that after me correcting you on what that fund was for. You said that the sheriff didn't have anything to do with it. I said, no, it's more of a partnership between the sheriff and the commissioners. And then you said, yes, sort of a partnership.
Well, yeah, it's always been that way.
So you just sort of came back with what I said to you after.
I mean, I've been here 20 years. I didn't just start doing this day before yesterday.
And I know plenty of people who have been around for a long time, but that does not mean that they are experts in any field. That just might mean that they have survived long enough to be around for 20 years.
Well, if you can cotton the commissioners into doing something, they shouldn't be Well, if you can kind the commissioners into doing something they shouldn't be doing, you know, that's the way it works.
Could you get a copy of that, that policy, so we can read it?
I have a copy at home. I can bring it to you.
You don't need the policy, you need the general statute.
I got the statute. And I've got the statute. Charlie?
Ah, yes.
Charlie, the money belongs to the sheriff. The money has to be used for law enforcement. But in order to spend it, you have to come before this board, correct? And we have to approve it.
Yes, funds have to be appropriated.
So all you're doing is cutting out the first part of dealing with financial. If you want to allocate it to, if you want to spend it on something, you still have to come before this board. You require our approval.
Yes. We have, we have to abide by the policies that are put forth for the county.
Correct, correct.
So, but I will say on that, just to get everything out there, there are some, you know, thresholds that we wouldn't have to come back for approval. You know, and that just gets everything out there. There are some thresholds that are actually set by the commissioners. But there's no mention of that in statute.
The policy of what we said.
20,000.
Excuse me?
20,000.
That's right, 20,000.
Is that in the statute, or is that a commissioner convention?
That is a Beaufort County policy, in the purchasing policy.
Well, you may have gotten it into the purchasing policy. I don't know how it's in there, but it was never intended for that to be in there.
That's in general.
That's in general.
The board adopted a purchasing policy two years ago, and it sets certain limits.
But that doesn't apply to this statute. You can't overrule a general statute with a policy.
The general statute, again, I'm not going to speak from the statute because I don't have it in front of me. But I mean, I don't know that the statute, I've never seen a statute that set limits on how much you could spend.
There's no limits in the statute.
It does not set limits, but it sets a procedure, and it defines somewhat what the money can be used for.
And I think Charlie said that. It has to be used to do.
The statutes that would require us to go by the board would be other statutes that are set by the local government commissioner.
Well, again, this is a big change in the county policy.
Well, I think that the way, if I remember it from years past, that the money stays in the sheriff's possession.
No.
If he wants to buy something with it, he's got to come toward, to the board for us to approve it, before he can spend it. Isn't that correct, Brian?
$20,100. But the money stays with the county commissioners. If the sheriff wants to buy something, he comes to the county commissioners. The sheriff doesn't have his own accounts.
Where do you, where do you keep the seized money at?
All of the funds are held.
Are held.
Over there, county finances.
But they're given by the state or federal government for law enforcement activities.
It is restricted funds.
So technically, it's the sheriff's money. You're safekeeping it in a separate account. And it has to be used for law enforcement. It can't be used for anything else.
It has to be used to benefit law enforcement.
Correct. And the only thing we have by policy is, is that we have to approve any purchases over $20,000.
That's not necessarily policy. That doesn't apply to this general statute. They can try to make it apply if they want to.
There's nothing in the statute that says what you're talking about.
It's up to the commissioners. In the past, like, I've been here longer than you guys. I know what's happened in the past. Each individual purchase came to the commissioners. The sheriff department was always finagling and wangling to get the money without the commissioners having to know about it or approve it. I know what's going on in the past. And Charlie's, to his credit, is trying to pull a fast one. He's trying to get all the money at one time. Guys, we don't need to do this.
If I can give an example of what could possibly happen after this. Say we appropriate $168,400. And say the commissioners say, oh, we're not going to give you 10 cars, but we'll give you seven, and then we'll go back and let you purchase three vehicles out of that fund, like you wanted to do several months ago, but it got denied. If the funds are already appropriated for that, then we don't have to go through a two-month process of going through the finance office, go back to the board, and getting it approved and re-approved and all of that, because that step's already done. So you can say that somebody's trying to pull a fast one, but it's not the truth. I mean, that's just flat out not the truth.
I'm sorry that we disagree.
Well, I mean, we disagree on a lot of things, but I mean, but it's one of those things where, on this one, we can disagree, and I get to be right. I mean, because that's just flat out how it is.
No, I'm right. And that's how it is. The money is deposited with the county commissioners, and it's held by the county commissioners for a reason and for a purpose. And the sheriff cannot just spend the money without coming to the commissioners and getting approved. That's the way it is.
I get what you say. And I get, I've had the opportunity to study you for several years now.
Oh, man.
And you say, all right, well, this is what it is. And whether it is or whether it isn't, you say that it is. And then I get to say something, and then you say something last, and then you say it a little bit loud. But just because you say it last, and just because you say it loud, doesn't make it any correct. It just means that you're wrong at the top of your voice. And on this one, that is just where this is going to be.
Charlie, you're trying to make a snitch and get all the money at one time. And as a police officer, you shouldn't be pulling tricks like this.
All right. Gentlemen, we're in the budget session, budget workshop. We're going to move, you're going to have a chance to vote later on, and if you want to pull it out, that's fine. We're going to go to the fire tax district revenues.
So on the fire tax revenues, these are the revenues that come in. And just as a prequel to this, all of these are existing. There are some requests that come in under service expansions, where certain areas have requested to increase those. The only one that's already increased in here is the Washington township. Because under the agreement that the board did in approving the expansion of EMS in that area, the agreement was that we would take that from 4.5 to 5 cent to the maximum. So that's already programmed in. The rest of them are exactly the way they were, but you do have in the service expansion, Chalkwindy's asked to bump their EMS to the 5 cent maximum. Chalkwindy Fire has asked to bump theirs by a penny. Richland Township has asked to bump theirs, and the North Side Fire District has asked to bump theirs. So we'll get into those when you get into the service expansion. But these are, the only thing different in this one is the Washington township one, which was a program to bump to the maximum 5 cent for 4.5.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm not comfortable with raising people's property tax on, just because somebody asked us to do it.
They will be here to make that presentation to you and justify that.
And I would like, I would also like to know what the general public has got to say about it. That's in those areas.
Well, and that's why, and remember, this board sets that tax rate.
I understand that.
So if you have your public hearing, you will hear from folks, when you have your public hearing on your budget, whether they want you to do that or not want you to do that. But the agencies that receive those funds are going to come, and we made it a service expansion. So they've got, they're going to come stand in front of you. They're going to say, this is why, this is what we need, and they'll answer any questions you have, and you'll get to make a decision whether you want to do that or not. Anita, correct me, the Pantiga Township, we did include that one. We anticipated that the town of Pantiga was not included in the Pantiga Township EMS tax. We had a conversation with them about that, and we said, do you want to pay the equivalent of 5 cent, just like the town of Bellhaven does, just like the town of Bath is going to do? Or do you want us to incorporate the area inside the town limits in that district? And the county started taking care of that. And they said, we'd rather you do that. So we're in the process. We talked to y'all about that. We've sent out letters to everybody, as we're required to do under the statute, to expand that territory. There will be a separate public hearing on that, at the same night that you have your public hearing for this budget. And then when you adopt the budget, however you do, you will also have the opportunity to adopt whether you include that in there. And they've asked, they, by resolution, the town of Pantiga, by resolution, has asked to be included in that district.
Brian, if I remember correctly, the town of Pantiga's number was $10,000?
$9,400, yes.
And you're showing, what, $25,000?
There was some growth in the current year, just the Pantiga township in general.
Okay.
So the collections will come in over what was budgeted in the current year.
And the money that comes in from Bellhaven and Bath will show up in the, on the revenue side?
In the general fund.
In the general fund, okay. Any questions on the fire tax districts or the EMS tax district revenues or expenses, I guess? All right, you want to give, well, I guess the rest of them self-explanatory unless anyone has a question?
The tax revow, it's just your 1/8 that you're putting in, and then the economic development fund we talked about the other day, that's committee 100, industry-rated building, and the airport manager for C-11.
Are we down to water?
We are.
Plenty of it outside.
So the big piece on this one is, it is programmed in, again, you recall, and there was a, the board made a decision to, from year 15 to 18, to bump the water district rate, the rate by 3% because of the way the debt has laddered up, so that you would be building a fund balance to be able to pay for that debt throughout, as that debt came doing, as it ramped up. And you'll see on page 157, that debt service paid with summary. And then you'll see the 3% increase across the districts, and you'll see the revenue summary. So we had a big discussion last year about that, and how it ramped up in the way that debt was put in place. So you had to be, the board, I guess several years ago, said, we see that coming, and we want to ramp up for those years 3%. So this is the last year, I think, of the program, 3%. And then we're going to, we'll do another big calculation on that to make sure that in the out year, where we need to be when we look at it next year.
So in 18, we'll pretty well reach the, I wouldn't say the peak, but it'll pretty level after that.
Based on the spreadsheets that have been done previously, again, what we want to do is, we want to sit down and do a big, another in-depth review of that, to make sure that as we look out over the next 10 years, as we look out over that debt, that we're, that we know what's coming and we're able to manage it, based on, you know, the increases that have been put in place so far.
But you're right. If you look at the schedule, as far as the debt goes, on the top table on page 157, you can see for 2018, our debt increases $454,463. And then it just goes up $31,738 next year, in addition to $20,600. So we really experienced the large increases in '16, '17, and again in '18.
And that was all based on how the debt was structured when it was done.
Questions on the, on the debt service or on the rate increase?
I have a question.
3%? Yes, sir?
On page 157, the revenue summary at the bottom of the page, that last chart?
Yes.
I'm missing something. Why is the 2017 revenue increase at 3% for the total for all the districts at $223,000? But when you go to 2018, the same 3% gives us $727,000?
Yeah. There are other fee increases that we're recommending. We just hadn't gotten to that yet, and I'm sure Christina can speak to those. We actually sat down a couple of weeks ago, and we looked at several fees. We looked at connection fees, Christina. We looked at service fees, and also, I guess, the tap-on fee. And we're making some recommendations on increases in those areas.
Yeah, I looked at that chart, and that's where that comes from. I'd be glad to hear what she has to say.
And I'll go back and double-check, because that, actually, that number I had kind of jumped out. But I will talk to you about the fee increases that were proposed. And those are listed in the appendix at the back with the fee chart. Actually, the next to the last page is very back of the book.
Very back.
And actually, the next to the last page is the revised rate schedule.
442.
Yes, 443.
Start on 442.
Right. Can I do 443 first?
Yes, you sure can. You're in control.
443 is the actual rate structure. This is the one, as a reminder, each of our seven districts, they all have seven different rates. And that is because each of the districts were created at a different time. And there was a vote taken by the residents for that particular district. And it's my understanding those rates were based upon what the initial cost of the construction of that portion of the system would be. So that's why they are varying rates throughout the county. And that is a question that we take in the office constantly with people asking that. And I'm sure that you have residents that ask you that question as well. So it's historically because of the way the system was built, which started back in 1989, is when the water department was first implemented. But the rate, so the rate schedule that's shown on page 443 has the 3% increase. There's also another change with this rate schedule. There are seven districts. Previously, there were three districts that had one rate structure, and the remaining four districts had another. And the four remaining had what is called a decreasing rate structure. A decreasing rate structure means that you pay less the more water that you use. And that was, that was the industry standard back in the late '80s, early '90s, when the system was first started. However, if you all recall the drought a few years ago, the state came down with a mandate that systems are not to have that decreasing rate structure. They do not like the decreasing rate structure, because again, conservation is the word of the moment. So during a drought, you want to conserve, which puts water districts in a little bit of a limbo, because we make money selling water. But conservation is what we should all be doing, so, you know, we're in a little bit of a catch-22 there. But in order to participate in grant programs through the state and the federal government, you are not allowed to have a decreasing rate structure. You actually have to certify that, stating that you do not have a decreasing rate structure. Previously, three of our districts, that had been eliminated. I can't go back and find in the records why or how, but my assumption is it was done specifically so that we would qualify for grant programs, which is, again, what we are asking. Because as you know, we have been awarded grant programs, District 5, District 6. And in order to accept those funds, we are unable to have a decreasing rate structure. So what was done in District 1, 2, I think, 4, and a couple of the others, is previously, there was a rate for the first 2,000 gallons, then there was a rate for the next 2,000 gallons, and then there was a rate for all gallons over 4,000. Well, the majority of our customers, it's going to be 4,000 gallons or less a month. So that last tier rate wasn't used that often. But what, what the proposed rate schedule is, is it removes that all over 4,000. So now, all of the rate structures in all seven districts are the same. You pay a certain amount for the first 2,000 gallons, and then all gallons over that 2,000 are at a certain rate per 1,000. And that makes Beaufort County standard with everyone else in the state, because obviously, everyone else is just like us, and they want to qualify for grant funds. So that is one rate change. The other is the fee schedule, which is on page 442. Now, this is a change that has not been in place, but the tap-on fee. Previously, Beaufort County had a $500 tap-on fee. No matter where you live, no matter what costs were incurred, it was $500. I've been with the county for four years. Eric has been with the county 12. It's been 500 as long as anyone can remember. When we looked at the cost, and the finance office, and we're all looking together, we were losing money on each and every tap that we put in, losing a lot of money. The actual material cost, as of July 1, because there's going to be a 9% rate increase on anything with brass, we're looking at a cost of right at $470, just for the material cost. If your home is on the same side of the road as the water line, so that's a short bore, 20 feet or less of service line, so you're looking at 470, we were only charging 500. So if you're on the opposite side of the road, from where our water main is, which generally speaking is at least half of our customers, we're losing even more money, because that's just material, not including labor, equipment, for the people being there. Also, in Beaufort County, a change that's happened in the past few years, we self- Also, in Beaufort County, a change that's happened in the past few years, we self-perform our short bores, if it's basically a two-lane road, or a subdivision road, or something like that, we self-perform that in the water department. However, if it's a DOT, what's considered a high-traffic road, we have to contract that out. Contracting that out is, you're paying at least ten dollars a foot. So, again, that's more money that we're losing. Uh, as Highway seventeen, Highway, uh, two sixty-four are great highways, a great economic boom to the county. Highway seventeen being four-laned is wonderful for the economic development of the county. It's very expensive to shoot a water line across four lanes of traffic, with two-turn lanes and an interior median. So, um, you know, each time we have those, we're, we're losing quite a bit of money. In speaking with management, we, you know, look at what the cost is and make a, a suggestion. So, we sat down, went through the cost of what they were. We felt that the best way to do it, uh, is basically to differentiate between a short bore and a long bore. A service, um, you know, you, it's difficult balancing penalizing people that happen to live on a four-lane highway, or people that don't, but, um, this is what we felt was the fairest way to do it. We did do a survey of surrounding counties, and comparing what, um, tap-on fees were. And so, you'll see what, how we have that listed here, with a three-quarter inch meter with a short service, which is sixty feet or less, is eight hundred. Uh, long service, which is sixty-one feet or more, is sixteen hundred. Um, and then, the one meter, and meters larger than that, is still cost plus twenty percent, with a minimum of three thousand, which we did not increase that. We felt that, uh, that's still, uh, because it's cost-plus, it still covers our cost. Again, looking back, I'm not, um, not a big fan of increasing fees, but again, it appears that it had been five hundred dollars for many, many years. And this system was again, started back in nineteen eighty-nine. Scary to think, but, you know, twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years. So, people have had the opportunity to, to sign on for water, if they needed to sign on for water, if they wanted to. So, um, again, this is what we are presenting. The other change, going down, the deposits. Uh, currently, I believe, we, we have a seventy-five dollar deposit. What we found is that that's not covering the cost, if we have someone who comes in and signs up. Uh, the way our collection policy is, where you have to be two months in arrears before you're on the cutoff list, that that, uh, seventy-five dollars was not covering the amount of money that was due to the water department. So, by increasing the deposit, uh, it allows us to give us that amount of money that we're able to hold in reserves, in case someone does stop paying and skips out, you know, rental places, we, we have that happen frequently. So, at least that way, we would be able to recover the monies. If their past due accounts is less than the one hundred dollars, we would retain what we need to retain to pay their balance off in full, and then, we would refund the remaining amount to the customer. Another fee, change of occupancy fee, that remains the same, fifty dollars. Uh, the reconnect fee is fifty dollars. Previously, that was a twenty-five dollar fee. Another name for the reconnect, or the reconnect fee is if your water is cut off or not paying, um, your bill. We did not feel that twenty-five dollars sufficiently covered the cost. Uh, if you live in the outlined areas of the county, our office is located in Washington, we have to send someone to your location, lock the meter, and then, they have to go back again, so the travel back and forth. Uh, so, we did increase that to fifty dollars. Uh, the late fee remains the same, the meter testing fee remains the same. The tampering fee, uh, added additional clarification here. Uh, we are having, um, we do have tampering. And it's a very difficult, um, situation to address when you have it, because, um, you know, proving who does it, um, when did they do it, who knew about it, and that type of thing. So, the more clarification that we have in our policies and on our fee schedule, the better it allows the office staff to be able to respond to that. Uh, so, we have first occurrence, a hundred dollars, plus the cost of repairs, plus twenty percent. Second occurrence, we increase it to two hundred, plus the cost of repairs, plus twenty percent. And the third occurrence, uh, two hundred dollars, plus the tap is removed, and they must open a new account to reconnect. So, that would mean the new, new fees, new tap-on fees. Tampering with a, a water system is a criminal offense, uh, but the, the problem is gathering the evidence to be able to prosecute it. So, um, when someone tampers with a water meter, they may think it's as simple as, you know, they're just providing water to their home, but if the, the appropriate backflow devices and protection devices are not there, they are putting everyone else on our water system at risk. And so, it's a very serious matter, and we just want to make sure that we're able to, to handle that the best that we can. Uh, moving the meter cost, this was also additional clarification added. Uh, previously, that was a three hundred dollar fee. Um, and the problem again, is the location, because previously, we didn't have, uh, a lot of information. So, if you have someone living on a corner lot, and the previous owner wanted their meter located on the side street, and now, the new person, someone else new moves in, wants to do a renovation, wants to move his driveway, so suddenly, we would have to go and move the meter to the opposite, to the mainway, and there would be quite a bit of expense incurred with that. So, we want to make sure that we're able to, um, recover those costs. Return check fee remained the same, hydrant meter fee remained the same, um, hydrant meter replacement fee remained the same, and the copies remain the same.
Would you handle a, like a one-inch pipe under a Highway seventeen, four-lane? That would be a long bore, regardless of how far you had to go. But now, if you get into a situation where you, you're doing a distribution line, which might be a two-inch line, or something like that, or bigger, then that would be, that would have to be permitted, and et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, sir. If it's a main, if it's a service line, it would not be. If it's a main, part of our main distribution system, that has to go through, um, public water supply and DQ to be permitted.
Okay.
What does, um, what, did you say it was, uh, boring fee was ten dollars a foot?
Typically, yes. For the small, for the service, the, the small pipe for just a individual residential service, as the, as it gets larger, as the pipe gets larger, the fee gets higher. But right now, it's at ten dollars a foot. And of course, hopefully, that doesn't increase, but again, you know, we're, things increase all the time.
You want to move back to one fifty-seven?
Yes, sir.
I, I guess the question still remains, uh, that was raised by Commissioner Richardson, is, is that number right, going from two twenty-three to seven twenty-seven?
As I recall, the miscellaneous fee increases that, um, Christina just covered, generated about three hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars. And it looks like the one percent increase should be about two fifty. So, that number does seem a little high. I will go back and take a look at that number, that's seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
So, you, you were taking like the average number of hookups the previous year, and just multiplying that times the change? The increase?
I did a ratio. I did a ratio.
Okay.
If this, if this rate that we were charging brought us this amount of revenue, then what would this new rate bring us?
Yeah, that might be two hundred thousand high, but it may not be either, so I understand it better now.
It's a good, another look, so I'll take.
Okay.
And there's also growth factor in there, because we are still growing.
We, we did factor in a one percent growth factor, so that's a piece of it also.
Yeah, we might get there.
Okay, it, on the individual districts, they're all pretty much formatted the same way. Uh, and I'm looking here, I didn't pay, I didn't look at every, every water district, but this is district number one, the first page. The water purchase went up thirty-four thousand. Is that, is that growth, or is that an increase? This is on one fifty-nine.
Yes, sir. And that's, that's purely what we pay the city of Washington, so, um, potential, uh, increase in the rate, as well as, they also are doing about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars worth of improvements to the water treatment plant, to the wells, and so, we pay a portion of that.
Okay. Any, any questions from, uh, the commissioners on the, on the expense?
Not me.
I, I noticed back on the, uh, on the rate schedule, you had Longacre East on there twice, is, do we have two districts with the same name, or?
Should not be.
That very last, last page, that we were looking at, under the fee schedule, four forty-three.
No, sir, that, that's a typo. District Two would...
It's Two East, District Two, Longacre.
I'm not sure. We never use the names of these. This is something that, when they were first...
Well, I like it. I, I like having the name, I like having the name on there, that's why we get it right.
I'm not, District One is the far western part of the north side of the river, and then, they progressively go, District, as you're working your way east, they go Two, Three, Four, Five, and then, Six and Seven are on the south side of the river. So, I'm not sure if One is Longacre East, and One should be Longacre West.
Two, I think, is usually called Bunyan.
Bunyan, yeah.
Bunyan? I'm right there.
Those names are never used, but as you see, Longacre East includes Washington Park, so that gives you kind of a general idea, general idea of the area of the county.
I do have a question about the expenses.
Okay.
On page one, it looks like on page one fifty-nine, that he, and you go to the column, which says two thousand and seventeen estimate, and then, a two thousand and eighteen recommended. We're going from like seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand in round numbers to nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That's about a twenty percent increase, and it looked like most of these, rest of these districts are doing about the same thing, so why the, uh, why the increase?
Because we did not spend all of the funds in this current budget year. Because if you recall from the, um, commissioner's retreat, the reduction in salary that we have struggled through this past year, if you go back and look at the revised budget of twenty seventeen, you'll see that number is a little bit more in line. So, there's actually quite a bit of funds that are going back into quote-unquote "fund balance" this year, because we have not actually incurred those funds. Uh, project, for instance, the hydraulic model, which, we, we did not allocate those funds, so that, we did not spend that. So, included in that twenty seventeen estimate, is that, those funds are not included in that.
Well, was the hydraulic model a capital expense, or an operating expense?
Capital.
So, what we'll probably need to do with that, is at the June regular meeting, we'll, we'll need to shift those funds out of the water fund into a capital project fund, so we can carry them forward, and get that project completed next year. Because you've not rebudgeted for them.
The hydraulic model actually is in this one, is where we carried that. But some of the other items, uh, but again, the, the tank maintenance, we had funds appropriated, and we only entered into that contract last month, so it's only a quarter of those funds are appropriated in the twenty seventeen, and the remaining funds will be rolled back into the, the fund balance. So, that's why that, that column is actually lower. And there's been some maintenance and things like that, that has been deferred until this year.
There's stuff that needed to be done, anyway.
Any other questions, Christina? You want to move right into solid waste?
One of the things, and I think we, um, we talked about this at the planning retreat, um, and I know, um, Bobby has spoken about it, and we've had some pretty serious conversations about it. Um, one of the policy decisions regarding solid waste, one of the issues that we run into, and what we're seeking is some clarification. Solid waste right now, you're charged if you have an improved property. If you've got a property that has an improvement on it, so vacant land's not charged, we don't charge for vacant land. But if you have a bill, you have a property that has a structure on it, then we charge you for that, unless it's a business, right? Who has a certified, who has a hauler, businesses have their, businesses, we don't, businesses have to do their own thing. So, the issue that we've run into, from, because this goes out on the tax bill, you look on your tax bill, you'll see, and it's not, it's not a tax, that's kind of the issue. Um, we do, we do, we do show it on the tax bill, um, but it is a fee. It is a fee to, to support the solid waste. It is paying for the disposal of solid waste. And what's happened, and, and for what Bobby has said to us, when they, when they look at it, they will have institutions like churches, um, and, and those, that fee is being taken off of churches.
Why?
Well, that's the question we had.
That doesn't make a lick of sense.
Well, my understanding was that, he says that was the direction of the board, years ago.
I've been here for years, and I've never heard that.
That they had come to the board and said, you know, "We don't think that's right, we're, we're tax exempt," and, and what, the conversation we were having was, "Well, that's taxes, that's not fees." That's like, "You still have to pay your water bill, don't you?"
Yeah, right.
So...
Can I say this? My, uh, my church is in Terrell County, we pay.
Well, then, if we can get a clarification from the board, then what I will say to Bobby is, there are no waivers on this. Everybody pays who has a structure owning, and, on a piece of property.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
I, I, I think you would, right now, anything that was classified as exempt on the tax book, if they had improvements, whether it's a, a church or a private school, is not paying it.
That's right.
And always it's...
And they should be.
Right. Anything that gets exempt, right now, is not paying it.
Right. And they should be, because it's not a tax, it's a fee.
It's a fee, it's a fee for service, yeah.
It's like a water bill.
Yeah.
And they have to pay that as well. And I think that was, that was, you know, there was a little bit of an argument, folks would come in and say, "Well, I, I would just take it to my house then." But, you know, churches generate trash, just like any other exempt facility generates trash, and it's not like you would, it's not the same amount of trash you have at your house.
Well, if a church has a property, and they're not using it for religious purposes, they have to pay tax on it.
That's correct.
So, I mean, where was the logic in all that? To begin with, I don't recall a board ever doing that. I really don't.
Well, this clarifies it for us, and moving forward, that will help us tremendously, because over the years, we have had a bunch of folks that we weren't charging. So, this will help us stabilize that solid waste.
If you got anybody in there you're exempting, you need to bring it to the board and let us vote on it for an exemption, because I don't remember ever exempting anybody on solid waste fees.
I, I think it would be wise, at our meeting, June the twelfth, to have that on the agenda for us to pass a resolution...
That they be charged, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, right. That would be...
Just to clarify.
I agree.
I got, I got one question, and, you know, I should know this, but I don't. Do the people in municipalities get, get charged for, uh, solid waste?
Yeah.
Yes.
Even though, even though the city picks their trash up?
That's right. However, it's not a double fee. It's not, you're not being double-charged, okay? Because you're paying for the disposal. And the city of Washington picks up your trash, they're not paying for the disposal.
No.
They're, they're only, you're only paying them for the service, for the people to go pick it up.
Collection.
They carry it to the dump, and they dump it for free.
It goes to the same facility as ours.
Yes.
We're paying for it, the county's paying for it. So, the disposal costs are paid for by the county. The pickup fee, the labor to pick it up, you're, you're charged, you're charged, if you live in the city, for the city doing that. And the city does it, they're not charging you for tipping fees. They're just charging you for their, their fee.
There, there, I'll say this while you're looking at this, there are some other things that have gone on out there that involve something like this that I never understood, of, well, these people, uh, this locate particular, and involves apartment buildings in particular, well, they've got a dumpster, so that nobody there has to pay fees, and they, we probably need to look at that, too. Well, apartment buildings in particular, apartment buildings.
I think they're considered businesses, are they, Christina?
I would typically think so, if they have...
So, they have their own separate pickup, not the city?
Well, the city, wait a minute, the city does pick up businesses in, correct me if I'm wrong, you were there, too. So, the city has a business pickup, the fork trucks that come pick it up.
Right.
They also allow other entities to come in, like other trash services.
You can contract for service.
Contracts, which they really shouldn't have done, they shouldn't have allowed.
Yeah.
Park R.
Yeah. So, if, if you're like with Park R, or you're with some other, they're charging you, and they're paying the tipping fee, and you're paying the tipping fee. If you're at the city, and you're on a business account, and their fork truck is picking it up, you're paying the pickup, and you're paying the tipping fee.
Who do you pay the tipping fee? Who do you pay the tipping fee to? How do we know?
The city. The city is having to pay the tipping fee at the, at the transfer station.
For commercial?
For commercial, yes, sir.
Okay.
Only, the only thing that we're paying for is residential, and that's the guys driving around in the back.
Okay.
The, the thing that concerns me about our solid waste budget is last year, we tried our best, and I think I understand now why we didn't end up with a revenue stream that we were hoping to, is because of the exemptions.
Yes. When we got the numbers, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but when we got the numbers, we said, how many, how many, how many accounts do we have? And we took that number, and we built our budget. Thank goodness, we're okay. But, but then, as things came in, things were getting knocked off. And at the end, we said, well, how many do we have? And there was a difference. We're like, well, wait a minute, why is there a difference? And that's when we had this conversation. Well, those are exempt. Well, why are they exempt? Because that's the way we've been told to do it. Okay, well, that probably isn't the way we need to do it. We'll go back to the board, and we'll ask them, is that right or not? And y'all say, no, and we'll take that on your next agenda to clarify that. But I think, that's what I'm saying. With, with those additions, we built the budget based on a certain number that we said, these are the ones we're going to collect from. Over the year, that's been cut, and we didn't know it. We now know it, and we're okay.
How many exemptions do we have? You have any idea?
He had a, he's probably got, stacked that.
I probably get it wrong, but I would say it was about $70,000 worth.
Yeah.
True.
A lot of churches.
I, I think, the number's over a thousand. I think it's on the exempt list.
Yeah, that's a lot. What about nonprofits and all this other stuff? Are they on that exempt list, too?
I would assume.
I think they were.
Oh, they, gee.
So we're, we're cleaning that up.
Well, I get more, I get more calls on rollover sites than I do anything else. And I thought we had about $100,000 to $125,000 in the budget to at least make improvements in the ones that we owned. And now, this budget doesn't show that we've got any money in there to put rocks in and build a ramp for some of the older people.
No, sir. It's very limited. And the improvements that we're in for this year, the tonnage has increased in Beaufort County. So a combination of revenues decreasing, so we were not anticipating getting in the revenues to cover what we had previously budgeted. Tonnage increased, Hurricane Matthew increased. So when we were looking at the numbers, we were in serious, serious concerns that we were not going to have enough money in the solid waste budget to pay what we are contracted with Republic Services to pay. And so at that point, we made the decision to halt any capital improvements at the convenience sites to make sure that we were able to pay the invoices that we received. Because we, it's contractual. Each tonnage, we pay a certain dollar amount per ton. And based upon the trends that we were having, we were anticipating not having enough funds to be able to pay that.
I think when you get these exemptions, I think we're going to have some money. I think there's more there than what we're aware of.
Right. Do, do we have any sites that are used, where the volume is so low that we could close?
No.
Well, you got neighborhood...
You guys don't keep the numbers.
No, you got neighborhood problems when you do that.
You don't keep them either. You close it.
You got, like, the Aurora site, for example, is, I'm sure, a very low-tonnage site. But if you close Aurora...
Then you close it.
You're disenfranchising about a third of the area of the county, you know?
Aurora's not the one I was asking about.
There, there are sites that do have less traffic than other sites. There's no doubt about that. We can look at the tonnages and things. But when the contract was renegotiated, when we negotiated with Republic, we voted, or the vote was to continue the same level of service that we were previously providing. Now, I will say, Beaufort County citizens have a very high level of service when it comes to convenience sites, convenience sites' location, as well as convenience site hours. Surrounding counties did a little brief survey in the hours that convenience sites are open. You know, if you have something you want to dispose of, there are very few hours in the week that you cannot dispose of it in Beaufort County. And, and you typically do not have to drive very far to do it. However, if you're looking at closing sites, you're not going to be saving on the tonnage. You're only going to be saving on the labor costs.
Which is minor.
To operate the sites.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we got plenty of sites. I, I have one individual, you called me up, and he said he went to three sites before he could get rid of it, because there was, the compactor was full at two sites.
There are certain days of the week that...
This was the Monday after a holiday.
Which is very, that's probably one of the worst times to go to a convenience site, because they are full.
So, so it looks like we're going to have some money to do some, some site work, hopefully.
Hopefully, yes, sir.
Does, Christina?
Yes.
Does Republic, is Republic responsible for maintaining the sites that they...
Yes.
So they'll repair the roadway and...
No, sir. We pay, they are responsible for managing the sites.
Just managing.
Yes. And doing the inspections and identifying needs. If there are needs, capital needs that need to be made, the county is responsible for making those improvements.
So, the Chairman asked you, is going into the new fiscal year, will we have money to repair some of these sites?
There, there is some M&R money, but it's not a huge amount, because again, trying to get the revenue stream identified, again, we're just trying to make basic changes this year to, I hate to say Band-Aid, but again, to Band-Aid until we can get our arms around what the revenue stream will be and should be in the future.
Okay, okay.
But, but you're saying it's growing 3%, the tonnage. Is that...
I'm not sure about 3%, but it's growing consistently each year. And this year, it's difficult to measure because of Hurricane Matthew.
Okay.
And that, those, when the storm came through, we were blessed that it wasn't a severe storm, so we didn't have the large amount of debris on the side of the road. But what happened is, everyone took their own debris off themselves. So it was commingled with all of our other typical municipal ways. So it's very difficult to quantify. I did run a analysis based upon the October, November, and December trash from previous year to this past year, and it's about a $38,000 increase in what we paid for disposal fees.
The bad thing about that is we're collecting a fixed fee, and we're paying out an increasing fee. So that cuts into us.
Well, that gets back, just like the water enterprise. I mean, you know, we're bumping rates 3% to handle some of that. But in this one, we just started, so I'm not advocating that we increase it until we see what the revenue stream is.
From the new fines.
Yeah, from the new fines. But...
I would recommend that we take any additional revenue from the nonprofits and put $50,000 of that towards maintenance. That would bring your maintenance line item up to $61,000.
Okay.
And, and I think we'll have about $20,000 left for contingency. So, but we'll have better numbers in a couple of weeks on that.
And of course, the more that we can drive to recycling, the better off we are. And that's, that's easier, that's easy to do in the municipalities where they're dumping it to parks.
It's hard to do out in the country.
It's hard to do out in the country, because everybody throws it in the same bag. I mean, and it's a whole lot cheaper tipping fee for us, a whole lot, on the recycling. So just educating people and trying to help them understand, if they can pull that recycling out, it helps us a lot.
Well, I have a question related to that somewhat. There's some wild rumors out there having to do with white goods and tire disposal, that we're commingling that with the trash that goes out, that they're not being separated.
Absolutely not.
Well, there's people complaining to me about it, that they've seen it, so...
No. Well, tires, the only place that we accept scrap tires is at the closed landfill on Hawkins Beach Road. So there's a place set up there, that the tires go there, and then we are contracted.
But if a guy's got one tire, and he's at Aurora, or he's at somewhere else, what's he going to do with that tire? He's going to throw it in the bin?
No, it's going to go on the side of the highway.
Not if the site attendant is watching him. It should not be thrown in the bin.
All right.
And white goods, it's also, certain locations, certain convenience sites accept white goods, and then Republic Services takes those.
Well, okay, if the guy's in there with the tire, and the site attendant catches it, what's he going to tell him to do with the tire?
Take it to the landfill on Hawkins Beach Road.
You're right, Frankie. It's going to go on the side of the road.
About three miles from the site, within the first three miles of the site.
And scrap tires are one of the things that we are, it's, it's per general statute that they're not allowed in the landfill. So we are...
I got you.
Or it may end up a planter around a mailbox. You never know. People...
If it lands just right, it can be. Most of them are all the way down in the very bottom.
That's true.
Do you have any?
No, I don't have anything.
I'm ready.
You finished?
Not quite. I have one more thing, just in the, sorry, I can never, just in the interest of openness. Going back to the Water Department, one of the things that I'd like to discuss, or just briefly tell you, is emergency generators. That's something that we've discussed throughout the years, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands. No need to flip in your book. Last year, we talked about a three-year implementation of providing standby emergency power to the Water Department sites. $600,000 was allocated last year. That came basically from fund balance. This year is not included in this budget, because as Finance Office and myself and Brian, we were looking at things. And what, we want to make sure of this evaluation of this 3% increase, making sure that the water districts, all of the water districts, are in good financial standing. What we are proposing to do is this coming year, to do an in-depth analysis of that, what the current expenditures are, what the future expenditures are, what the debt service will be, and look at what is the best way to move forward with the emergency power generation. Is it to, again, pay upfront through, through the fund balance? Is it to do some type of financing? Or what is the best path forward? We want to be able to move funds into a sinking fund.
Debt sinking fund.
Debt sinking fund, to make sure that we have the, to make sure that the funds to pay back the future debt services set aside. We want to make sure that we are protected before we move forward with year two of the standby generator power. Again, hoping, in the June meeting, I'll be bringing to you a contract for your approval to move forward with the first year of that. So as we're moving forward with that, we'll be doing this analysis. And so I'll be coming back to you at some point in the future, in the future budget year, to discuss emergency power again. But just wanted to clarify why it is not in this current proposed budget.
Did we get knocked out on the grants?
The grants through North Carolina Emergency Management, I do not have a lot of hope for that. And as far as this current budget year, there's not a chance. They just do not process paperwork that quickly.
Okay.
But we're still hoping for year three to be able to, to be in the running for it.
Is that it?
Okay.
Okay, we will recess until Tuesday night at 5:00.